And again, thanks for being here. I really want to, as you guys can see by all these cables and all this stuff, Access Humboldt, I can't say enough about those guys. They've really done a great job and tried to make a basketball gymnasium into a public forum. This is also being livestreamed, gavel to gavel, and it is also on 96.7 on your FM dial, gavel to gavel. And I think we only had one or two yesterday, and if you want to, we'll have a couple of breaks today. I'll make myself available. But if there's going to be an F-bomb thrown, that is an FCC violation. Let's not put them in violation. And it doesn't carry any weight, anyway. So with that, we're going to continue with the public comment part of this. We're starting with number 214 through 220. And just for a clarification, just because we know some people may have lost their number, we have a list with the numbers and the names. If you did lose your number, please show your ID and we will issue you another number. But I lost my homework without any verification is not going to work. Please.
Good morning, everyone. Quite the marathon yesterday, and welcome back. I really tried to like this project. You know, the union jobs, the alternative energy, you know, all the right things. But I think there's some problems. A lot of them have been spoke about already. For me, the restoration of the site in 30 years, if there's still something there, is just really kind of a joke. I mean, a pile of foot of dirt on a 10-foot-deep pile of concrete and have 70 of those is just kind of ludicrous in my mind. But I think the real issue here that I see is not addressed is the water source. This is not a drop-in-the-bucket-type project. This is, there's a lot of water necessary. The Water Board sent you guys a letter saying there's not an approved water source for this. The EIR doesn't address this adequately, as far as I can tell. And I just don't understand how you possibly go through with a project or support an EIR that doesn't address that. We went to Ireland. We were fortunate to go to Ireland this summer and saw a bunch of derelict towers just standing there dead. They were only 10 or 15 years old. Ireland has stopped some of their major windmill projects after kind of going all-in. There's a lot of problems here. Australia, same thing. They had, they also went all-in, had some major issues when a typhoon came through and over-energized the grid. So these aren't easy problems to solve, but I think that we've got to deal with, first the water. And frankly, I think it's kind of embarrassing that it isn't been dealt with. This isn't just a, oops, we just found out about it. This is a pretty clear thing. Thank you very much.
My name is Rainbow Marjanovic. I live in Whitethorn right now, and I stand here for our earth. To take away a carbon sink to try to help the earth doesn't make sense to me. I also stand here with solidarity with the Wiat tribe. And I have been working in Humboldt County for the last 12 years or so. I've worked for companies that have been around the area for more than 30 years. There are trees that are going to be cut down that are a lot older than that. This community here, we're a very green community, and it's interesting for me to stand here and look at all plastic water bottles on your tables. That's a lot of plastic water bottles on your tables for us being, you being a green company. I have served on the task force, the Zero Waste Task Force, for the city of Arcata. And so this is a very important, very important issue for me as far as being green and taking care of our earth and using reusable stuff. I don't see a green community, a green company here. And I'm very concerned about our labor workers. I ran into two of my friends yesterday. They're both looking for this project to go through so they can stay here with their families. Two years? That's not longevity. Please, please do not let this company ruin our mountain tops. Thank you so much for your time and your being here and holding this space where we can all be. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hang on just a second. It's been, any ex parte communications that you want to disclose?
Oh, there we go. Got it. Sorry. I had an ex parte communication this morning, so one of, that was with a former Assembly member, Mike Gatto, who was the primary author of AB 52, which is the tribal disclosure law. And he wanted to let me know that he'd been watching this proceeding and that the purpose in his mind of the legislature in AB 52 was that tribes in consultation are to disclose sacred sites in a consultative process that is supposed to be pretty fairly specific and through the state and through, and register those sites through the state in a confidential process. And that its goal is to both allow tribes to have that ability to register those sites, but also give some kind of certainty to the process of these deliberative processes and these development processes so that the, I mean, and to put it in terms, I think, the way he said it, so the goalpost isn't moving around as we move forward. So I just wanted to let you know because I had an ex parte communication, so I'm doing my due diligence. And I'm doing it this time because according to our attorney, when we have ex parte communications with new or substantive information, we're supposed to put those out there as soon as possible so that anyone from the public can respond to those ex parte communications. So.
Anybody else? My phone got run over this weekend at the trucker's parade, so I couldn't call anybody because I don't have anybody's number.
And like I said, it was a call to me, not from me.
Please.
Good morning. My name is Honore Cress, and I live by the bay. Since 1970, 38% of shorebird population has disappeared. Humboldt Bay is listed as one of the 111 globally significant IBAs, Important Bird Areas on the Pacific Flyway, by the Audubon Society and Birdlife International. Global status means an IBA affects a significant portion of the world population of the species. A diversity of thousands of species are drawn to our waters for feeding, resting, nesting, and breeding. Migrating through the airspace of the proposed site of the wind farm are shorebirds, raptors, and important pollinators such as bats and hummingbirds. Although I recognize that climate change has become a climate crisis, it is unwise to panic and cut off our nose despite our face. The wind turbine energy industry has made some helpful advances to cut down on bird and bat deaths in recent years, but at this point, it is not enough. This sensitive site, so near Humboldt Bay, which draws almost literally a river of migrating birds, is a uniquely inappropriate site for this proposed wind farm using Teragen's current turbine design. We experienced power outages in October that were financially devastating for some businesses and individuals. The lessons I take from this experience is to create microgrids of solar power. Blue Lake Casino was a shining example of this type of success. I am strongly against the Teragen project, and I think it would be a more suitable and wise choice for our area to develop solar energy as our renewable energy solution. As was mentioned earlier, Teragen has spent four years developing this project, and migrating birds have spent thousands of years developing and flying their migratory routes.
Thank you.
I'm Starr. I'm an undergraduate student of Ocean Sciences at Humboldt State. That is Sonamina Swiss Climate Sciences. I want to give thanks specifically to the indigenous peoples that took their time to be here yesterday and today after lifetimes of systemic oppression. I also want to point a finger at Lain Russ and Russ Ranch and his jaded blinders. His statements yesterday were racist disregard to the indigenous peoples. And it's disturbing, and that's who you're doing business with. Saying no to Teragen is not saying no to renewables. I do give thanks to this project because it led me to research of greenwashing and tax advantages. I want, giant wind turbines have been idealized in imagery without public education of resources needed to make it happen. Bear River Ridge, the Matoll watershed, has been desiccated by decades of timber harvest ownership. The nations and stakeholders of the Greater Scotia area that are historically marginalized and not tied to HRC need to be respected by saying no to Teragen. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could get 220 through 230 to start staging?
Good morning, my earnest new friends of Teragen. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I too have rust blood flowing in my veins. Lain's great-grandfather and my great-grandmother were brother and sister. And due to a death in my family of my grandmother, a big portion of the Forest Home Ranch fell out of our hands. I have very many valid concerns that have already been voiced, but the most important one to me right now is what is going to happen to the aquifers. The westernmost wind generator tower is across my fence line. I live one-quarter of a mile, as the crow flies, away from it. I have had many wonderful conversations with these people to my left, and they feel that maybe there might be some way that this could be avoided. But a 33,000-ton wind generator tower perched on the westernmost hill of the Forest Home Ranch is a great concern to me. What is it going to do to my Kenman Pond, to my springs, and to the Howe Creek, which delivers water to the Eel River Valley? And not only that, the Howe Creek has never dried up. Another concern of mine is I'm an artist, and the viewscape, this unique Bear River watershed viewscape, is amazing. Please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Same rules as yesterday. Lots of happy hands, no clapping, hissing, F-bombs.
My name is Lauren Cannon. As a philosopher at HSU, I teach environmental ethics, which includes the ethics of global climate change. I've taught this course every semester for over a decade. I'm here today on my own accord. I am not indigenous to this area, but a descendant of a culture that is primarily responsible for global climate change. I want to acknowledge that all of you have a huge moral responsibility and a decision you need to make. The decision will be part of your legacy. You'll be held accountable. This decision illustrates your own moral conviction about what matters. If you allow this project, it will illustrate just how dismissive this body can be to the legitimate interests and culture of the Wiat people. Generally speaking, I do responsibility theory. Generally speaking, after harms have occurred, individuals can claim ignorance as a mitigating factor of responsibility. You might say, "I really didn't know the gun was loaded. I really didn't know it was going to hurt. I couldn't anticipate the harms." Here's the thing, you won't be able to claim ignorance. You know that this area is of great significance to the Wiat people. You've heard people speak all day yesterday about this. You know that there are environmental concerns. You cannot reasonably argue that these two facts are not overwhelmingly significant and relevant to your decision. I also teach logic. You also cannot reasonably argue that a carbon-free Humboldt County requires this kind of wind energy. The significant impact is in no sense avoidable. Given the moral force of the request of the Wiat people deciding to support this project would not be based on moral value, but on expediency, profits for a specific company, and a staggeringly callous dismissal of indigenous concerns. You can't achieve climate justice through injustice against indigenous people. You need to reject this project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Steve Madrone, members of the board. I'm a regional organizer for the California Kitchen, based in eastern Humboldt in Hoopa Valley. And we initiated the California Kitchen out of Standing Rock, where we fed over 1,000 people daily from the resources of California. We understand that the indigenous peoples that have lived on these lands, the Wiat tribe, which we currently reside on today, has the ultimate say and authority for the protection of their sacred sites, and that's what we will do. We will protect the sacred sites of the Wiat people. I am asking the board today to make a decision to not pass the Teragen project, and if you do, you are saying yes to the militarization of your police force to stop indigenous people from protecting their sacred sites. You personally will take responsibility for the arrest of hundreds, if not thousands, of indigenous people that will stand in defiance of this, of you passing this law or of you passing this process of the Teragen to commence construction. These are personal responsibilities that you'll go down in history for. This Board of Supervisors has once paid Humboldt County residents for the scalps of the Wiat people and for the scalps of my tribe and neighboring tribes that no longer exist in Humboldt County because of the genocide that occurred here. And these are the same types of actions that we're asking you to course your decision from today. Teragen, your organization will also be responsible for paying and being fiscally responsible for the funding of the rest of the indigenous peoples and the thousands of our allies that reside in this county. At Standing Rock, we were there in the invitation of the Standing Rock Nation, and they invited multiple tribes from across the region. I don't believe we'll have to do that. We have cities and municipalities here in Humboldt County that are asking you to not approve this project.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure that they'll continue to.
Thank you.
And now I speak for the thousand...
Thank you. We heard. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Sir, please. Yes. And I gave you that right, everybody, but the people in back of you have a right too, and I want to recognize their tribes. You're right, and I'm going to give them their two minutes. Please. Please give up the podium to the next speaker in line. You have spoken. Thank you. I... Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right, we're going to take a break. We're going to take a break. You keep on talking.
You keep on talking.
My name is Maria Sanchez and I work for the Office of Admissions at Humboldt State University. I am an undergraduate studying biology. And I speak for myself today, but I stand with the Weyat people. And I stand that I am shocked that the Board has only given the time to, has given all the time to a person from Texas, with all due respect, try to emotionally persuade you to, to fear monger you of global climate change. Yes, that is a real fact. That, yes, that is a real threat. But, as a generation, speaking from like yesterday, everybody was speaking about the next generation. Well, I am here speaking for the next generation that there were so present about. And we are here to tell you, no. And I do feel sorry for the union workers. I know it's hard to work outside your community, outside your home. I come from Mexico. I know how, um, how hard it is to be without your family. And I am shocked that only the native members and the mayor of Riedel and members of the academia only got granted two minutes. But we are here to stay and I hope you vote no. Because we have heard from scientists. We even heard from Joe stating that his research and his technology is not for, made for the bats in this community. We have heard of water rights. We have heard engineers. We have heard mathematicians. We have heard tribal members. We have heard the Cher's tribe. We have heard the mayor of Riedel trying to signify all of their citizens. And you only granted them six minutes, two minutes. And I'm here to tell you, in my two minutes, in the 10 seconds that I have left, to vote no. Because you are listening to our community and I know you will do the right thing. If not, we vote too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, what's up? My name is Michelle. I'm the tribal administrator for the Weyat tribe. This project will forever change Sakiuwa Ia, a prayer site for the Weyat people. Once these windmills are developed, it will forever change the nature of this place. It will destroy significant historic and cultural resources that cannot be replaced. It will impact over 100 different plant and animal species considered culturally important to Weyat people. I want to remind the supervisors, the state recognizes that destruction of cultural resources are the destruction of the environment. When asked about the impacts of cultural resource in a recent K-Mud radio interview, Nadalyn Delap, Terregen Project Liaison said, and I quote, "There are some impacts that are significant and unavoidable. One of these impacts would be to the cultural resources of the Weyat people. Bear River Ridge is a cultural historic site of the Weyat people. Unfortunately, this land is no longer in their possession. That property is private property, so this is a private property project with private tax dollars. I absolutely respect and understand the concerns of the Weyat people. But when they say there are no mitigations possible, we just have to take it at that and accept there are impacts to the Weyat people." This statement and others by the corporate marketing machine in paid radio ads, memes and public pressure meant to divide the community by forcing us to pick a side in a false dichotomy hint at the heart of this project: money. And a casual disregard for the people, plants and animals of this community and this place. I will leave you with a quote from Gus Speth, a U.S. advisor on climate change. "I used to think that top environmental problems were biodiversity loss, ecosystem collapse and climate change. I thought with 30 years of good science, we could address these problems, but I was wrong. The top environmental problems are selfishness, greed and apathy. And to deal with these, we need a spiritual and cultural transformation. And scientists do not know how to do that." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jooj.
Next.
Hi, my name is Curtis Clark. I've lived in Humboldt County since 1970. So, Board of Supervisors, Steve Adron, I think your answer here is really simple. It's two words, it's called offshore wind. Actually, I think it's two words, I think it's five words. It's called offshore wind is here now. I correct that, it's eight words, offshore wind is here now, and it's better. So I say now because RCA has already entered into an offshore wind space. It's called the Redwood Coast Offshore Wind Project. It has a signed MOU with Wind Developer Principal Power. It's for a 150-megawatt project with 15 deep-water floating turbines. Yeah, you can go to the Redwood Coast Energy website, it's right here. Excuse me. So, simply put, I think it's really germane to this discussion, to talk about this. The Redwood Coast Offshore Wind Project is a comparable option. It has the capacity to power all of Humboldt. I just think it's a bit deceptive that RCA did not bring this up. I think this is germane to this subject. And I know the Board of Supervisors knows about this. I personally gave copies of all of this information last week. And Estella's also on the RCA Board and she's also a BOEM advisor. Anyway, back to Humboldt Wind. I think the offshore wind project, and I'm quoting here from the RCA website, "The wind resource off Humboldt County is the best off California." Again, from their website, "The North Coast offshore wind energy potential is unparalleled in the United States. And most importantly, due to recent advances, floating offshore wind foundations allow the development of this local wind resource." So Humboldt offshore wind is coming. It's the answer here. It works with proven deep-water floating foundations. And it's coming to Humboldt.
Thank you.
I think you should do it.
Greetings. My name is Nathaniel McWigan. I am the Chair of the Peace and Freedom Party of Humboldt County. And I'm here to read a statement by our party. "The Peace and Freedom Party is a political party committed to socialism, democracy, ecology, feminism and racial equality. As a party, we are dedicated toward serving the working class as well as marginalized communities who do not own capital in this capitalist society. It is with this commitment that we stand in full solidarity with the Weyat tribe in opposing the Terregen Wind Project. We oppose this project for a lot of the reasons that have already been stated previously by previous speakers in regards to, regarding the genocide that have occurred against the Weyat tribe as well as like the environmental destruction that this project will cause. But as a party, it is also important to note that that Terregen is a green capitalist industry. Green capitalism presents itself as a giving hand to capitalism, but in reality is still the system that exploits workers and the environment to achieve its mandated goal of making a profit. This project will perpetuate the exploitation of the Weyat and Urok, the residents of Eel River Valley, Scotia and Riedel. Also, the unique corridor of habitat that links the Eel River with the Pacific Ocean. We also stand in solidarity with the City Council of Riedel and Scotia and also the residents of the Eel River Valley who oppose this project. They will suffer the negative health effects of close proximity to wind turbines, known as wind turbine syndrome. Also, the loss in property value to come with the turbines. In the case of Arcrite, New York, the wind turbines are the direct cause of depreciation of property values because of the properties of fog, the sound and light." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I would first like to acknowledge that we are on Weyat land and I stand with y'all against the Terrewind Project. I am Adriana Rodriguez Torres, or Izzy, for those that can't roll your Rs. I am a Humboldt State student, which is, Humboldt State also happens to be in Weyat land. I am majoring in Political Science with an emphasis in Environmental Policy and Sustainability. So in the near future, I hope to take one of your seats. As a resident of Humboldt County and a Humboldt County registered voter, I echo the many issues that others have raised around the Terrewind Project. The ecological and cultural devastation that the project would impose is tremendous. Needless to say, it would be a blatant exertion of colonialism repeating itself. The land itself is a sacred prayer site for the Weyat people and the turbines would explicitly disrespect this. Also, few flying species are being reintroduced to the area while wind turbines have a huge negative impact on population drops of birds and bats in the areas they function. The waste that would come from the turbines themselves would be too devastating as they only last about 30 years themselves. The project itself is dangerously understudied while the studies from local environmental scientists in conjunction with indigenous knowledge have shown disastrous consequences. These factors cannot be ignored when deciding on the clearance of the project. The voices of Humboldt County residents must be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
I speak on behalf of Cooperation Humboldt. Even though my actions, I do this as a citizen because I feel like unjust rules should not be abided by. We at Cooperation Humboldt participate in acts of and produce programs which create local resilience. We oppose the Terrewind Project because of the following reasons. The Weyat and the Urok tribe have both opposed the project in the DEIR and a public comment. Allowing this project to move forward is beyond disrespectful to the tribes and lacks any consideration of the genocidal history of this area or nation. As stated in the FEIR and the DEIR, the placement of the turbines on sacred high prayer land will cause impacts that are significant and unavoidable. This is not acceptable. This project is an example of green capitalism. The concept that the earth's climate can be protected, not at a cost but at a profit, is pure delusion. Capitalism is a system of exploitation of the worker and our environment. Any gains or savings Terregen accomplishes will be on the backs of the Weyat, the Urok, the community members of the Eel River Valley, Riedel, Scotia, at the expense of an area of habitat that acts as a crossroads of terrestrial and aerial migratory paths of hundreds of species and the taxpayer which is subsidizing this project. Those in close proximity to the turbines around the world are reporting ill-health effects and depreciation of property value. Because of fog, because fog carries light and sound, the radius of effects will be magnified. This project will not create local resilience. Terrewind Project will not provide power during public safety shutdowns. The project will not convert Humboldt into an energy island and it will further entangle us with the murderous and negligent PG&E grid. As stated in the letter of opposition from the Riedel Council in regards to the mitigation, monitoring and reporting program, the city is disappointed that it is, that was not included in the FEIR as required by Section 15097 of the SEQA guidelines. Without this important component of FEIR-
Thank you.
Hello.
How was the drive?
It was long and I've been to every single meeting. I came, I drove two hours to be here, so I hope you get off your phones, Nadalyn, and off your computer, Nathan. I was at the courthouse and stood out in the lobby with a local lawyer who specifically, personally asked Nathan if he would continue this project if all of the people of our county opposed it. And he said, yes, he would. He does not care and I hope y'all do. We've also been told we simplify everything. Well, we only have two minutes, so let me keep it simple. There's only one sustainable thing in my hand. And it's not my left hand. We need our wildlife. Let's not miss that. But since it seems like this focus is on my left hand, not many people are talking about that, this $250,000 you say you're gonna get every year, that's 10 of me. I pay $25,000 in property taxes to Humboldt County every year. You can't find 10 more people like me willing to do that, who will not harm a frog, who will not harm corvids or any other animal, who steps over native plants, who has an awareness about what's going on here. Because I live in nature. The power goes out in Honeydew two weeks a year. So what? I can live without it. I lived without it for 10 years, no electricity. Till we found out you could put alligator clips on your car battery and have a little light bulb and read, and that's all you really need. Another thing, Energy Capital Partners, they have 41 companies, all fossil fuel, coal, gas, natural gas. If you were going to invest in fossil fuels right now, you would be insane. They cannot finance this project. They're probably gonna go bankrupt. The largest bank in the world has stopped financing fossil fuels. Are you aware of that? Every university in America is pulling out of investing in fossil fuels. That's 39 of their companies. They're never gonna make it. One turbine goes down and they said they can't sustain this financially. Wait till the 9.0 hits. I was in Japan for the 9.0. Those wind turbines are not going to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get 30 through 40, please? Please line up.
I'm opposed to the Terrewind farm siting and request the supervisors to table this project until another more appropriate location can be found. The unprecedented fast-tracking of this project includes no mitigation for the eight substantial impacts stated in the EIR. I oppose Terrewind farm siting on Monument Ridge because the ridge is a major raptor in migratory bird flyway. The statistics on bird mortality in wind farms is widely documented. I oppose the siting of Monument Ridge because the Weyat tribe plans to release condors back into their historic range, including Monument Ridge, and this project is a major threat to the success of that program. I oppose Terrewind farm siting because this is on unstable soils, near-known fault lines and is sited above the filtration galleries for the towns of Pepperwood, Eleanor, Scotia and Riedel and constitutes a real threat to their water supply. Lastly, I do not trust Terregen. Any dealings with them must include ironclad contracts that guarantee Humboldt County access to their power in cases of PG&E emergency shutdowns. I remind the supervisors that Terregen is a subsidiary of Energy Capital Partners, the folks who wanted to turn Samoa Spit into an LNG terminal, financed by Goldman Sachs just months before the 2008 stock market crash. Their other subsidiary projects include the Dakota Pipeline and fracking. Monument Ridge will not become a sacrifice zone for the carbon trade scheme. We will fight them until a more sustainable location is found for this project. And you are facing people that don't lose lawsuits.
Thank you. All right. Great, thank you very much.
Good morning. I'm Sandra Grubie and I moved in 2001. Can you hear me? No? Thank you. My name is Sandra Manson. I moved to Humboldt County in 2001. I was retiring from work as a city planner in the Bay Area, where I worked for 31 years. First for a private consulting firm that traveled around the state and to New Mexico and Arizona and Utah and Oregon doing plans. The 1970s was when I was starting and we had just studied the Environmental Quality Act, which was based on the National Environmental Quality Plan. And it was a very exciting time. During the 70s, people were building passive solar homes and buildings and there was a lot of encouraging work going on. When I came to Humboldt, I was, my sons and I chose Humboldt to live in after I retired because we thought it was one of the most beautiful places on earth after traveling across the country for three months and deciding where to live. So the first shock that happened was the forests coming down and we worked on forest defense because we found out that endangered species could be impacted by forest destruction and that that was not considered an environmental impact report if you had a timber harvest plan and some other little payoffs. So, the second was that, that the pulp mill was spewing out pollution. And before I had bought my house, I couldn't see that. Anyway, it was quite shocking. To summarize, California is the most biodiverse state in the country and has the most endangered species. Doesn't speak very well for what we've done since we've been occupying California, which had been cared for for centuries by the Native Americans whose impact was almost nothing.
Thank you. Please. 40 through 50? 40 through 50? 50 through 60 then, please.
Hi, my name is Marie Cotty. Please vote no on the Terrewind Project. Right idea, wrong location. The subsidies paid to wind power will earn them massive profits are our tax dollars and these subsidies will not be extended. California has chosen to mandate solar panels on rooftops on all new construction that will cover each home's power needs, starting January 1st, just a few weeks from now. Free solar panels are available to low-income people and are available and also will remove the burden of the landlords from having to put them on every home if they have low-income tenants. Tesla has great deals and RCP has a project going for solar on businesses in Humboldt County. All of these will be on the footprint of an existing building. This is clearly a 12th-hour, last-ditch money grab by Terrewind to cash in on subsidies that will make wind power profitable. They are not even using state-of-the-art turbines to decrease building costs and increase their profit. That's how much they care about even pretending to do a good job here. There are many more negative impacts than those listed in the EIR. I sent an email to you with links and articles by researchers at Harvard. Pile driving to create the base for turbines pollutes aquifers and wells with toxic substances in the ground near, but not in the aquifers. The earth is amazing place. Ontario has banned pile driving when putting in wind turbines due to this fact. And if you do your research, there's many others. There has just been newly-developed offshore aerodynamic wind turbines to harvest deep-sea winds. The Department of Energy said these new turbines are lighter, float and can generate two times the energy created by all of the energy plants combined in the U.S. With placement along the Great Lakes and U.S. coasts, this will provide all the power we need. There is no reason to rush to land-based turbines in this pristine location.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think if someone does own, supervisor owns-
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Ward and I am a neighbor to the Humboldt Redwood Company in the Humboldt Redwood State Park. And when the state of California accepted ownership of the Humboldt Redwood State Park, there is an expectation on the part of the Women's Federation that these lands would be protected and taken care of. Money was donated from every state and from people around the world to protect this forest. When Humboldt Redwood Company wanted to purchase the land, this Board of Supervisors, maybe not you in particular, but the people who sat in your seats at that time, promised us an era, a new era of sustainability. So far, there has been nothing sustainable about the practices of the Humboldt Redwood Company. I've been working to restore and conserve the forest in the Metol and to return the salmon with my community for nearly 40 years. The $12 million that they've spent so far doesn't come close to the effort that we've put in to bringing back the natural functions of our watershed. This is one landscape. I'd like you to look at the bigger picture. This is a temperate rainforest that's been severely fragmented. It's in recovery. This is the worst of greenwashing that I've seen in a very long time. Humboldt Redwood Company has us living in fear of the dead-standing fuels from their herbicide use. This will not help with that. We are in a paradise situation right now and it's very frightening to myself and my neighbors. The roads are collapsing in the park. Nothing's being done about it. We've worked very, very hard and we've done everything we could to make things better and I hope you'll do the same.
Thank you. Did Humboldt County send out an RFP, a Request for a Proposal? Or did Terregen bring this project on their own? Yesterday, somebody said the cart before the horse. Lacking a county plan for dealing with climate crisis in Humboldt County, we have no way for placing this windmill project in a context of what we already know are the issues facing Humboldt County and evaluating it accordingly. What do we know? As reported in the North Coast Environmental Center's ECO News, because we are rural, county, transportation is our biggest concern of greenhouse gases. The second biggest concern is cattle and dairy. Electricity consumption is the third. This information comes from the Climate Regional Plan developed by the staffs of RCA and the Humboldt Board of Supervisors. Have you read it? The reason cattle is a problem is because they produce methane, which is 30 times at least more potent than CO2. The good news is that after 10 years, methane becomes CO2, which has a longer life. This means we have, if we want to have meaningful action to mitigate the climate crisis in a five-to-10-year period, which the scientists tell us is what we have, then reducing methane is very necessary. People yesterday referred to Greta Thunberg. Greta says, "Listen to the scientists." And we have five to 10 years to avoid the tipping points. Shouldn't we be evaluating the CO2E impacts of this project prorated to five or 10 years instead of 30? And she also said, "People especially from the indigenous communities need to be listened to." Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Linda Evans and I'm a resident of McKinleyville. I've worked in, as a SEQA practitioner since 1977. I've written and reviewed multiple, many, countless environmental documents, SEQA documents and NIPA documents. I continue to work part-time in this practice. I'm concerned that moving forward with the status of this environmental document that the way that it is, leaves the county very vulnerable. You must know this in terms of lawsuit. That there are multiple points of decision-making and the purpose of SEQA is to have the decision-makers be offered the opportunity to make informed decisions without the studies that are deferred, which the Sunstrom- which the Sunstrom versus the County Amendicino shaped how SEQA was done. This was a lawsuit that said you can't make decisions based on future, um, future reports that you don't already have available, yet there are multiple references in the DEIR that kick the can down the road, and you're not provided that information. I, I think the other part that I wanted to bring up to the awareness is that the tribal consultation is a continuous practice. It's not a once-and-done. It has to be done throughout until the end of the environmental documents. So if you've only consulted once with the tribe, and maybe only with one tribe, it's probably not enough. And I stand with the recommendations that come from the Wiat tribe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, thank you for your time to listen to me while trying to make this difficult decision. I wanted to expand upon what was said yesterday. Humboldt County Code, Zone Regulations, Chapter 2, Section 312-6, where no development permit or variance shall be issued until the department has received written certification from all applicable regulatory agencies. The FEIR does not contain this written documentation. As per Chapter 4 of the Humboldt County Zoning Regulations, electric generation is not one of the principal permitted uses compatible in ag or TPZ zones. Additionally, Chapter 4, Sections 314-69.1 and 314-43.13, windmills are permissible structures, but windmills that produce energy for export off the ranch or farm are excluded. Civic Development Impact Findings of Chapter 2, Section 312-31.3 states that the facility will have no significant adverse impact on sensitive habitat resources. It appears this project is clearly inconsistent with Humboldt County Code for zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sixty through sixty-four, next.
All my relations, prayer for the one-legged, the two-legged, the four-legged, the fanned, the feathered, the crawlers. Father sky, mother earth, prayer for deep peace, sacred forest quiet, voluntary simplicity, eighteen-inch journey from the head to the heart. From the head to the heart. Listen, 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 open heart, go slow. Protect mighty redwood forest empire. Obsolete technology destroying ecology, green rush disgust, humanity versus insanity, noise pollution, short-sighted, money-motivated, unlimited greed, unsustainable, not maintainable. For what? Power? Tax credits? Decimation of the indigenous nation, forest quiet, be still, be still and know. Omataquiasi.
Thank you. Please. Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Harry. I stand with the Wiat and tell you to deny the Terre Gen project. I'm new here. This land is not my home. This land is not where millennia of my blood and my ancestors exist. This is the home of the Wiat. I am a guest here, and my mama taught me how to be a good guest. I do the dishes. I make my bed. I express gratitude. I leave the place better than I found it. I was taught to keep checking in, to make sure it's cool to be there, to know what else I could contribute. I listen. I don't dig up the garden. I don't desecrate the sacred. I don't drive species to extinction or clearcut their trees. I don't build a wind farm without their consent. I work extra hard because the people who were here before me with the same color skin implemented a violent and exploitive system where a few win and most lose. Those people posted armed men at the doors, too. I'm here to urge you to work really hard at being a good guest. Your lineages have much to own up to, and the beautiful burden of making amends and making right is on your shoulders. Denying this project and any others that look to profit from and exploit indigenous inhabitants' land and water is your opportunity to heal the wounds our white ancestors wrought. I would like to paint an image of the blood that coats the turbines' blades, the blood that coats your hands, the racist act that the approval and even the proposal of this project is. What I want to be sure to say is that these people, the Wiat humans, the Wiat trees, birds, insects, wind, sun, earth, they have welcomed me into their home. I give my life to their protection. I want to make sure that you know the depth of that, how very, very deep it goes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I know the louder they get, you need to respond, but please.
Good morning. My name is Natalie Rin. I moved here four years ago to attend HSU, and since then, I've put down roots here despite moving over a dozen times. And I birthed my child here. He was born in Arcata on Wiat land, and I'm speaking on his behalf as well when we say we don't want your dirty energy. This is not clean energy. Destroying ecosystems to put in these giant windmills is not the way to go. We don't want this power. There's a lot of research coming out of HSU. The tribes have spoken very clearly what they would prefer, and we don't want this project in Humboldt County. The first step I think we can take is learning how to use less energy. I spent this summer living off-grid without power for most of the time, and it's a truly humbling and freeing experience. I suggest you all try it and reconnect to this land. Connect to the other relatives that surround you and listen to what they are saying. Listen to the tribes. Listen to the people who are speaking in front of you instead of being on your laptops or your phone. We all have work to do, but we're showing up here because this is important. This project does not belong here. There are many great ways to have alternative energy. There's a lot of options rolling out. We don't need to rush in on some corporate agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm, my name is Melanie McCaver. I'm here not as a planning commissioner, but as a public citizen and scientist. And I'd just like to reiterate, um, what many of us have said, but something that I feel is really important, which is to not overlook the significant unavoidable impacts on cultural resources and biological resources. And indeed, not to trade what is an indirect inferred projected effect for a direct effect. We have substantial evidence to show that there are direct effects. The indirect effects are inferred and projected. In addition to that, there are a lot of effects that are overlooked, some of them on insects. Something that hasn't been brought up much is the effect on wind itself. This wind itself is going to have effects on pollen. There are a lot of cannabis farms in the area. Although we don't have a lot of evidence for this directly, it certainly can be inferred that there are going to be effects on pollen drift from the effects of these wind turbines. And we just put a moratorium on hemp for those reasons, to protect those genetic resources. So this is another risk that we would be taking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Simpson. I have a confession, a couple confessions. One is that Rex and Estelle and Sonoham are all friends of mine, of ours, and I suspect that Virginia and Mike will be someday because I admire them. Another confession, we seem to be... Jane and I have been involved in climate change issues since 1998. We have been doing, uh, we've been active, and we have been doing theater about musical comedy and musical comedy about climate change. So I have to forewarn everybody that anything you say or do tonight might be in the next show. And we've been dealing with climate change issues for twenty years. This was no different. We've somehow managed to get to eleven out of the last twelve conferences of the parties. We just got back from Madrid. And, uh, Madrid was no different, really. It was much the same. And we all know by now the effects have not been good. Wealthy countries have refused to take on the suffering of the poor, while the poor countries desperately need to improve their lot and will do almost anything they can to do that. What does this mean for us in Humboldt County? The likelihood of sea level rise, droughts, changing storms have not decreased. Does the current treaty, Terre Gen Council, pardon me, Project, promise to do anything about that? Unlikely, given the impacts on the ground likely to occur. Most of the impacts are on the biological and ecological level, on the landscape and species, and not on the level of energy. How much is lost when a new species, when a species, for instance, disappears? What does it cost to replace a species?
Thank you.
We seem to be on the verge of taking the steps we were altogether-
David, thank you. David, you're either gonna have to grow a ponytail or gain some weight, depending if you're gonna play Steven or I.
Hello, uh, I'm Jane Lapina, wife of David. David and I have been involved in the issue of climate change for a long time. Our first involvement was back in 1998 when we performed at a conference on sustainability in Istanbul and learned that the people of the Inuit Circumpolar Council were already thinking and wondering about climate change. At that time, even our environmentalist friends' eyes glazed over when we talked about it. We proceeded to do two musical comedies about the issue, funny but deadly serious. We have tended ten out of the last eleven UN conferences on climate change and have just returned from Madrid, Spain, where COP25 Conference of the Parties has just occurred. In the end, it had the same conclusion as in the previous COPs that we have attended. The rich, developed countries against all odds, given the imminent destruction of the planet, are not willing to give up the wealth and both help the poor, undeveloped countries who contributed little or none of the emissions and are suffering consequences the most so far, and unbelievably don't seem to be thinking about their children and grandchildren. I see this Terre Gen project as similar. The corporation is coming in here to advance their profits and perhaps put them back into the parent company to finish off the fossil fuels that are still available to them. In doing so, they will be destroying one of the last pristine landscapes of its kind. One of the main battles of the UN is centered about climate justice. Here, we have another climate issue in the destruction of the Wiat sacred land and culture, the amount of electricity we will achieve, which, by the way, will go into the PG&E grid, the same failing PG&E that, um, that caused major climate-driven fires, perhaps nonexistent compared to what we will lose in biodiversity and spiritual beauty. I stand with the Wiat and the myriad animals, microorganisms, prairie and trees on the ridges that will be destroyed. Let's figure out how to create our own power company in Humb-
Thank you. And you could play Estelle pretty easy, I think.
How alo. Good morning. Yorin, Kori, Masiyo, Vivo, and Botwak. I live in McKinleyville in Botwak, and my family and I are honored to live in Wiat territory, ancestral Wiat territory. I believe all European-Americans living in Wiat territory should follow the lead, especially when it comes to environmentalism, and, uh, I urge all the supervisors to please, uh, listen to what everybody here had to say. I support the Wiat tribe. I support the Wiat Sacred Sites Fund, and I also support the Wiat Legal Defense Fund. And I urge everybody here to do the same. And I would like to, uh, close the, uh, the public comment period, um, if I may, with a very quick, under a minute prayer. Thank you. Creator, great mystery, I ask, uh, I ask you to look over everybody as they travel home from this meeting. I thank you for everybody who expressed themselves here today, Creator. I thank you for this space here in the ancestral Wiat territory. And I, I give thanks for everybody who spoke from their heart today, and I know it's, it's a lot of pressure sometimes to feel the diversity, Creator, but I thank you for that diversity, and I pray that we can follow the lead of, of the Wiat and be humble and, and good to our neighbors and, uh, in accepting of people who are different. And I pray, uh, Creator, that our supervisors, uh, can look into their heart today and make a good decision-
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't doubt the sincerity of my environmentalist friend's opposition to this project. However, I, I do doubt some of the, uh, their premises. Humboldt County is not an island. The fate of the earth is our fate. Everyone says they want to protect our unique environment. Well, I think peoples from all over the world consider their home to be unique and worth protection, but very many people around the world's homes have already been sacrificed to the onslaught of climate change. In the last ten years, in our state of California, one hundred million trees have died due to the ongoing drought. Do we think we can stop that onslaught at our Humboldt County borders? Cheryl Seidner says that all land is sacred. Does she mean really all land, or does she just mean the land that they seek to control? She says that-
Please.
She says, she says that the, the ridge top will be lost. The ridge top will not be lost. The ridge top will be-
Excuse me?
The ridge top will be given the honor of harnessing the wind that blows across its summits and-
Hey. All right.
And providing the energy that we here in Humboldt County think we- its summits and providing the energy that we here in Humboldt County think we need to have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please.
I think there should be an investigation of the role of the Russ Ranch in the genocide of the Weot tribe by a county truth commission or the district attorney's office. There's no statute of limitations on homicide. Also, the company that you're doing business with is called Energy Capital Partners, and they're the owners of Teragen. They're a fossil fuel company. They deal in coal, power plants, metallurgical coal, oil, pipelines, all kinds of oil and gas infrastructure. About 85 to 90% of their investments are in fossil fuels. They also operate a nuclear waste burial site in Utah. I think before you do this project as clean energy, you should investigate the Energy Capital Partners nuclear waste site in Utah and see their plans of mixing high-level and low-level nuclear waste and then see if that's clean energy, which is against...they're trying to change the regulations to, you're not supposed to mix high-level and low-level. And that, so this kind of stuff is what the money is gonna go into. If you're putting, if you're allowing Energy Capital Partners to do business here in this county, they're gonna be overlords. They're capitalists, killers, as Donald Trump would say. And so if you want these kind of people running the county, they're way more powerful than you, they have way more money than you, and they run 5% of America's fossil fuel energy infrastructure. So that's what you're dealing with.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I actually let a 164, a 171, and a 188 show up today. So thank you.
Thank you for this time. My name is Norman Dupre. I've lived here for about 60 years, a member of the Operating Engineers. I worked on dismantling the PG&E power plant at King Salmon, so I understand the cost of fallibility and inefficiency. I helped build bridges to connect our county to the outside world and understand the pride that comes with a job well done. My wife's family has lived in this county for five generations. At one point, my wife worked at Resource Conservation and I worked at a local sawmill. We know it's possible to have different viewpoints and ideas and still achieve a common goal. I would like to believe in our future, our grandchildren's future, and their grandchildren's future. And seeing everybody here today gives me hope. Our house at this moment has a 5KW grid tie-in and we own an electric car. If there was an incentive right now that would, at this moment, that would help everybody in the county have their own microgrid, I would fully support that. If there was anything happening anywhere in our county to help deplete our reliance on fossil fuel, I would fully support that. We recognize that this is a small step and it's not perfect, but it is a step forward and we support that. We live, we all live on this planet. We have the responsibility locally to help globally and leave a legacy to the people that will come after us. I've lived in Lolita long enough to remember the rolling hills and forests that used to inhabit the space where Bear River Casino now occupies. I have a front row view of the land built over by gas stations, family fun centers, hotels, and flashing billboards. And yes, even a solar farm. I miss the rolling hills, but I understand that change is the only constant. We have to see...
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you all hear me? I really feel honored to be part of a gathering like this where we bring opposition and a lot of people with great integrity together to try to heal something.
Sir, I need you to talk this way. We have to hear you.
Well, I like to talk to my people too. I like to talk to you, but I also want you to understand that I'm for the Weot people, of course, and for the Matol people who are wiped out entirely, who shared their mountains with the Weots, the most peaceful tribe here. When we, in our manifest destiny, appeared here in 1849, we found maybe the only civilized people we've met in our lives, or one of the most. And there we were, out there rabbit hunting, almost like rabbit hunting after work, cutting down the old growth while we took on, cutting down the Matol people, firing at them, all that devastation. I'm not here about all that now. I'm just saying that manifest destiny never went away. It's all here. It's all here with us. It's right in our gut. And I want you to understand that this is a bigger project than we were facing here. We need to get together as a people, as a community, to really recognize our own problems, which we've been trying to do, and we've been trying to allow you to know. I'm part of Humboldt, a climate crisis, and Humboldt, a climate crisis, HSU, and brought you all of our documentations. Nobody has ever gotten back to me. Nobody. I should have worked harder. I think we all have to work harder at this. We don't want short-term, quick fixes to something that everybody in the community has to know about. We have to do this together. This is a huge climate crisis thing.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Haley and I'm a student at HSU. A lot of people have said what I was planning to before this, so I think I'm just gonna summarize what I've heard over the last few days. One, every scientist and expert who has come up here has told you and advised you against this project because the EIR for this project is rotten and at the very least needs to be redone and the project moved. Two, every student who has spoken says that we do not want this project. You say that it's for our generation, but we don't want it, not at the cost of indigenous sovereignty. Three, the construction workers and environmentalists who support this project have all spoken from a place of fear. They think that any solution is a solution, but any solution is not the right solution. Teragen would create energy for 30 years, but the impact of clearcutting our forests and paving over sacred land would last for thousands. This project is not an escape from fossil fuels. It is settler colonialism in a hat and a fake mustache. Five, our local tribal members have spoken and they are warning you that this project would be catastrophic. This place is unique. The scientists who have spoken here have said that it's because it's a biodiversity hotspot, but the Weot know that it is because this is sacred, a sacred place. And you don't seem to understand why that matters, so let me put it into perspective. This is a church. You would not bulldoze a mosque or a synagogue or a temple or any other religious place in the world, so why is this different? You are paving over Jerusalem here. Renewable energy is something that we desperately need to save ourselves, but not at the cost that you're offering here. A world with humans and concrete but no trees or birds is not a world worth living in. Believe me, I've lived in cities like that and they are empty and soulless places. I get that this is hard for you. My family works in our city planning commission and he comes home devastated from the hard choices, and this is a hard choice, but the right choice is no.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Benjamin Baer and I'm a climate reality leader with the former vice president Al Gore. I'm with Sunrise Movement and I'm currently pursuing a Bachelor of Science degree in environmental science primarily focusing on planning, policy, and sustainability. I not only understand the stakes of climate change, I often teach them, and I'm a major proponent for the installation of renewable energy. But with that said, I am against this project. True sustainable transitions and environmental justice cannot exist without social justice. Climate change has disproportionately affected indigenous communities, the poor, and communities of color across the world, and it is the same powers that profit off of the degradation and desecration of the planet that profit off of the disparity and injustice these communities face. And it's the indigenous communities that have been the strongest defense, advocates, and stewards in protecting sustainability, biodiversity, environmental justice, and the innate and intact sovereignty of the land. And we cannot go forward in trying to sideline them and disregard them for this renewable project. Now what we can do is listen to the hundreds upon hundreds of complaints and concerns from your own constituents who you have vowed to serve, find solutions to those issues, and implement them in a different project. This is not the be-all, end-all. There is another way we can go about this and we owe it to ourselves to go about this the right way, a way that actually establishes a real lasting workforce for the people here in Humboldt County and doesn't spit in the face of the Weot tribe. We owe it to them, we owe it to the indigenous tribal nations of this land, and we owe it to ourselves to do this right, and it starts by saying no to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That will end our public comment period. We are going to take a, I'm looking at, there will be a rebuttal time for the applicant and staff. This is, this is, this is the process. We welcome you to...15 minutes? We're going to take, actually, we will take 20 minutes. We'll be back here at 10:45, 10:45. Thank you. Everyone, we did on the break, somebody had an entry of the record for the wind project of a point of order, so that has been registered with the clerk. And there was also some confusion. I guess there might have been, I don't know this, there was two addresses for today's meeting, but on the actual board meeting site and printed on the agendas that were available online, it had waterfront drive, so I'm not sure where that goes. But anyway, just so everybody knows. Okay. So this, this is the part where we get, where you were listened to and statements were made and staff will now do comment on...
I think normally the applicant...
That's fine. We'll go to the applicant and then to staff.
There we go. Thank you again. My name is Randy Hoyle and I am senior vice president and chief development officer of Teragen. I would like to thank the county for running what is, under tough conditions, a good and fair process. In addition, I would like to thank the public for their comments. I'd like, a lot of this gets to, some of this gets to, you know, what type of company Teragen is. And we've been called a liar is an attack that I need to respond to. I will speak up. Thank you.
Randy?
Yeah. Okay. As I said, being called a liar is an attack that I'd like to respond to. Calling someone a liar many times over does not make it true. It is an unfounded statement with zero examples provided. As a leader in our company, I hold our people accountable and giving you straight talk, giving you straight talk about Teragen and the project. And that is the primary reason why I am here. Our best references, and specifically my references, are the people we have done business with in the past. You cannot enter communities across the state and even the broader nation and deliver the results we do without being an honest broker with integrity. Regarding threats, veiled or otherwise, Teragen is committed to this project and Teragen is committed to being a long-term partner in the community. Threats do not deter our advocacy for the project. Litigation has been a topic that has been brought up. Teragen has never threatened litigation against the county. We will not sue the county. Regarding the potential for the county to be litigated over the EIR, Teragen has already executed, I have executed, an indemnification agreement with the county, and we will cover all costs, including third-party legal bills related to any potential litigation should it be filed. This is standard practice and is not unique to Humboldt. Let's discuss some things related to the project. One of the things stated is you are going to build 47 parking lots, each as big as a football field, and they will be spread across the ridge. The amount of actual disturbances on the ridges has been way overstated with admittedly vivid imagery that is wrong. Each turbine pedestal has an area of 254 square feet above ground. That translates to 2.5 basketball courts area, basketball courts, above the ground for the project's turbines. That's a little over one basketball court above ground concrete on the 3.3 miles of the 14-mile Bear River Ridge we are utilizing. The reason why I reference basketball courts, because we are sitting on a basketball court. Pacific Flyway and avian usage. The Pacific Flyway is an important flyway and its border indeed crosses the project, but it also covers the entire state, including Fresno, Bakersfield, and El Centro. The project, under all instances, will need to abide by federal guidelines. That means complying with the MBTA, the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, the BEGIPA, the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, and the ESA, the Endangered Species Act. And as it relates to clearing forest land, a majority of the project and the genti will be on the Humboldt Redwood Company land, and it is an active forest operation. There have been some statements regarding line losses. It has claimed our effective capacity of 155 megawatts. By the time it gets to the Humboldt County customers will be 50 megawatts. Line losses to get to the Bridgeville substation... Line losses to get to the Bridgeville substation are five percent, and those are already included in the fifty-six percent number, meaning that those losses, our generation is actually greater than fifty-six percent of your need. Regardless, RCA, RCEA has confirmed our calculations. As it relates to production tax credits, the tax incentives that renewable energy projects receive are a pass-through directly to end users. It is a simple concept. If a project receives tax benefits, prices are low. If a project does not receive tax benefit, the price is increased by the value of the lost incentives. We get, we either get them or we don't get them, and in all instances, they are priced in to the ultimate power price. Water quality. We will not be using groundwater for construction, and water quality will be protected during construction. We are required by the EIR to do a pre-construction hydrology study to ensure turbine construction does not adversely impact any springs or aquifers. And the county has stop-work authority to serve as a backstop. We are required to follow California, California State Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan conditions, called SWIP, and national guidelines through the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, permit. There is no risk to Rio Del's water supply. There is no risk to Jordan Creek. For operations, de minimis amounts of groundwater for the operations building, and the groundwater will come from the Pepperwood area groundwater basin. One-point-seven acre-feet-per-year will be used. Fire prevention is a topic that's important to everyone. A fire safety plan has been created for the project as a part of the EIR. Teragen owns and operates nearly thirty renewable energy facilities, mostly in the state of California. We also own and manage several 230 KV transmission lines in California, and we have years of experience doing so. The turbines will have their own fire suppression. Regarding the transmission line, this will be a new transmission line, not a ninety-nine-year-old PG&E pole structure that caused fourteen billion dollars of damage. We also utilize, as best practices, an infrared drone to evaluate the transmission annually, transmission line annually, or hotspots. This will be a newly cleared right-of-way in a managed timber area with a known tree inventory to identify high-growth trees. A graphic was shown as, from supporting organizations that listed the National Audubon Society. National Audubon Society has been following the project. They support it, and they feel that the potential impacts do not rise to the level that warrants their involvement. Local Audubon disagrees. The showing of the National Audubon logo was in no way meant to infer that local Audubon supports the project. They do not. With regard to decommissioning, our foundations that we are placing up on the ridge are actually reinforcing the ridge line, which has been stated by the public as not being stable. Second, taking out the entire foundation will not only have a drastic impact, we will need to bring in fill and stabilize it long-term. Based on our practical experience as California's longest-serving operator, one of the two, one of two things will occur. These state-of-the-art turbines will absolutely be able to deliver power for thirty years. Thirty years is an artificial construct, and it's the only way that we can secure an MUP to operate for a long period of time. We will either operate post-thirty years if approved, or repower, just like we are doing at five California projects in 2020. Teragen is a renewable energy company with wind, solar, and geothermal investments. That is a team's purpose, and renewable energy infrastructure projects are my passion. I am an executive of Teragen. I have never met an executive of Calpine. We do not have common board members. The beneficiaries of Tenet of Teragen's investments benefit pension funds from unions, teachers, firefighters, and police, insurance companies, and university endowments. There has been some confusion about the project's structure. Why did you form Humboldt Wind Two? Humboldt Wind Two LLC was formed to hold a second power purchase agreement, the non-RCEA power purchase agreement for the project. Humboldt Wind Three will likely be formed as a, formed to hold agreement selling the remainder of the power from the project. Before my closing statement, I would also like to make a clarifying statement. Regarding further development by Humboldt Wind, we not only agree not to build or expand the Humboldt Wind Project, the wind project, we also agree not to seek an additional wind project in Humboldt County. Many people have said, "We like wind energy, just not here in Humboldt." But as many of the experts have explained, Humboldt County has established a policy supporting local renewable sources of energy in its general plan for a variety of reasons. And these reasons include energy resilience, energy diversity, reducing reliance on natural gas generation, GHG reduction, and lowering energy costs. Local governments have furthered this policy by establishing a local CCA to fulfill it, to procure clean, cost-effective, and local resources. Wind energy is no longer a new technology. It is now state-of-the-art. It has been shown to be a safe, clean, and reliable source of energy. It has benefited many counties in California and can benefit Humboldt, too. How do we know? We have invested four billion dollars in California communities. And we are, we look forward to investing three billion dollars in California's clean energy future. This development process started, the development process on this project started four years ago. An environmental review of this project started two years ago. It has not been a rushed process. As I explained, benefits of tax, tax benefits flow to the end user. In this case, for our project, Humboldt County End Users. When we started, the expiration of the federal tax credit seemed quite far away. But now, as we approach, we need to make a decision. We need to allocate what are called Safe Harbor turbines. They are golden turbines that allow the project to qualify for a hundred percent of the federal product production tax credit. We need to make a decision to allocate those to this project or another project by the end of this week. That is why we are requesting your approval today. If a decision on the project is delayed, and I'm just outlining this with straight talk, Teragen will need to assume any additional delay as a denial. This is a transformative infrastructure project, and infrastructure projects require a high level of expertise and investment. Expertise and investment are good things, and that is what Teragen is bringing to your county. We're not only offering you expertise and investment, we are offering you also an actionable project with tangible, local, economic, system, and environmental benefits, local jobs, local property taxes, locally sourced energy, reduced reliance on natural gas generation. Teragen is a company that is driven to deliver clean energy to California. We are ready to partner with the county, local labor, and RCEA to bring zero-emission energy to Humboldt County. I respectfully request your approval of the Humboldt Wind Energy Project, and we look forward to being a long-term partner in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. I've heard. With, with that, we will turn it over to our Planning and Building Department staff. John Ford?
Thank you, Chair Bone. And I'd like to just go through some of the points that have been raised that I think are important to respond to and to clarify. Though, one that I'm going to start with is that the EIR has been rushed and is inadequate. So one of the comments that is always important to understand when people are making such assertions is what is it that has not been addressed? And that's not a comment that has been made. There's a lot of comments that it's been rushed and that it's inadequate. But where those inadequacies lie have not been addressed. There's a lot of points taken relative to the significant adverse impacts that the EIR does address, and I'll talk about those more in a minute. But the fact is, is that those are addressed. In terms of it being rushed, I'd like to point out that this has been in the application process since two thousand, since May of 2018. By my math, that's an eighteen-month process of preparing the EIR. That's not a rushed process. The thing that has been extremely difficult about this process is the amount of public engagement. We have received significant letters on the DEIR. We received significant letters in response to the preparation of the FEIR, and one of the comments that was made is that there was not enough time to respond to the FEIR. But yet, for the planning commission, we received over eight hundred pages of comments in response to the FEIR. As we pointed out in our initial presentation, we responded to those, continued to respond to those, and so that we do feel like that has been adequately addressed. This process has included elaborate public engagement. There were public meetings that were held, there were scoping meetings, and where public input was taken, there was consultation according to AB 52. And contrary to one of the comments that was made, it was not a one-and-done. There were several meetings held with each of the tribes that asked for consultation. There were staff-to-staff consultations with both the Weyot and the Bear River Band of the Rona Ville Rancheria. There was also a board member in presence during consultation with each of those councils. So we took it from staff to the legislative level of the government-to-government consultation for both of those. And if I'm beginning to sound a little defensive about the quality of the EIR, it's because I am. There was a very good team that worked on this, and there are aspersions made that the scientists who have come and talked somehow are better than the scientists who have prepared the EIR. We have worked with people who are extremely experienced, who have been preparing EIRs and doing studies for many years. We laid that out when we first began this. I will also say that in fairness, the base information that was provided by the STANTEC team was tremendous. I don't, I think I can say this, but we, they were actually commented or complimented by CDFW for the quality of the base survey work that was done. So I'm not saying that that means that CDFW supports this project. I'm not. I'm saying that the scientific work that has been done was of a high-quality level. And, and that, it's very hard, I'm sure, for the scientists who are sitting here in this room, who have participated in sometimes very difficult discussions, to have their work called into question. Just maybe also in fairness, one of the experiences that has been repeated over and over again in working with Teragen is that yesterday Supervisor Wilson asked a question about the release of the condor and what would be happening with the continuation of whether or not the birds would be tagged and monitored or not. The Teragen team approached, and they do have an expert on their team who works with condors, and, and gave me an answer and said that, in all likelihood, what U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will do is that they will monitor the success of the release. And if the release is successful, they will continue to tag and monitor. But really, what they will do first is to determine whether or not it's successful. And that has nothing to do with the Humboldt Wind Project. That has to do with the release program. But as your staff, I typically don't rely on, even if I trust an applicant, I don't trust on their word to inform what I'm going to say to you. And so I had one of our supervising planners contact U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service yesterday. And his email that I can show you said, what they said is that what they will probably do is that they will monitor the success of the release. If it is successful, they will continue to tag and to put transmitters on the birds. But it really depends on what happens over the course of monitoring the release program. So in answer to Mr. Wilson's question, or Supervisor Wilson's question, I don't have a definitive answer from U.S. Fish and Wildlife in terms of how they're going to go about continuing to tag and monitor birds. All I can say is that if it's a successful release and the monitoring of it says that it should, they should continue to be tagged and monitored, they will be. There were questions raised relative to the water supply and whether or not, and that you can't approve this because there is no confirmed water supply and that there's a letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board expressing concern with the use of the water from HRC's COGIM. We have worked and have an email subsequent to that letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board asking for a condition that says they need to update their NEPTAS permit. And as part of that, they feel that it would be adequate to reuse that water. And as part of that, they feel that it would be adequate to reuse that water, and the water would be safe for dust control and for use in construction activities. I'd also like to step back and just briefly touch on the AB 52 process, because we do believe that we have tried to take that with sincerity and honesty and integrity, and consult with the tribes and understand what the concerns are. And one of the things that it is difficult, I come from a particular culture, and so the thing that was first said to, directly to me, was that in consultation, that Bear River Ridge may have been used as a prayer spot, because it's a high, high spot. And so based upon that discussion, we identified that as a potentially significant impact to tribal cultural resources. But that, and that is how it's characterized in the EIR. But what that has seemed to be picked up and translated by the public in the discussion on this now is that these are sacred sites, that are known sacred sites, that we should have known that they were sacred sites, and, and that has never, that was never disclosed to us. In fact, my understanding of AB 52, as was mentioned by Supervisor Wilson this morning, is that if there is something there, the ability to have that government-to-government consultation allows the tribe to fully disclose what their concerns are, for us then to take that into consideration with the ability to, to protect that from the public record so that we can then negotiate with an applicant, we can make changes to things without disclosing why, but just working with honesty and integrity with the, the tribe of concern. I also observed in some of the more recent correspondence that that has also expanded to include Monument Ridge as a sacred site, and that was never previously disclosed to There was also a request made, or comments made about recirculation, and without going into all the reasons why I can, but I feel like that has been fully addressed within the FEIR. There was a lot of new information. There were a lot of comments on the DEIR, but the long and the short of it is, is that none of the impact findings changed, none of the new information resulted in a new impact that needed to be further evaluated. The public was not deprived of their ability to understand what the impacts are and the level of significance of those impacts. Moving away from the EIR for a minute, there were several different comments made relative to this not being allowed to use based upon the zoning ordinance. There's three different, four different concerns there. Concern number one has to do with the fact that this is not an accessory structure as allowed as a principal use within the AE and TPZ zone. Well, this is not an accessory use. That's correct. This is a wind power project which is specifically allowed as a conditionally permitted within both of those zones. And a conditional use permit is the application that's currently being considered for this. The second part of that was a concern with needing to have all of the agencies approve the project. And the ordinance isn't that all agencies approve the project, it's that we have the comments from all the agencies and that we are working to address those, and that has been satisfactorily done. There is no ordinance requirement that needs to be conducted to allow this project to move forward. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the significant unavoidable impacts, because I think a lot of people are, are focusing on those with, with some good reason. But as we were thinking about these as a team, we thought that they could be broken down into three basic groups. And the reason to break them down into groups is to kind of come to a different understanding of, of the significance and why they're significant. The first of these is, is, is short-term impacts, and this has to do with the air quality impact, and this has specifically to do with nitrogen oxide. The impact there has to do with the construction activity, and it's a worst-case assumption. This is assuming that all the vehicles that could be operating on the project site are operating at the same time on the same day. That's a very conservative assumption. In all likelihood, that will not happen, but since it could, we took the very conservative approach to identify that it could and have that a significant adverse impact. The reality is, is that that will not happen. The reality, the other reality is, is that this is a short-term impact, and as discussed in the EIR, is that on an annual basis, the site is not out of compliance, it's not a significant impact. So it's very important to understand that impact, while it's identified as significant unavoidable, and it is mitigated to the extent feasible, there are mitigation measures applied, there are requirements for the use of specific equipment types, and to modify those equipment types as new technology becomes available. The other kind was, the other type of impact is an impact that just nothing can be done about. And this falls into two different groups. One is aesthetics, and as people have mentioned, and the, and the EIR clearly points out, the wind turbines are going to be visible, they're going to be visible from a lot of different places, and, and there's no mitigating that. There's just really nothing that can be done about it. And that's a corollary to the, the mitigation or the concern with the tribal cultural resources. Because we identified the Bear River Ridge as a tribal cultural resource, there is no way to mitigate that. The, the turbines will be there, the iconic nature of the ridge will have those on it, it will change the appearance of the ridge. Then the other was kind of a little bit different, and this has to do with significant unavoidable impacts where we're taking a very conservative stand. And that stand has to do with the fact that there's some uncertainty involved, and this primarily relates to biology. And in the first of those, it's the marbled merlet. With marbled merlet, the FEIR identifies that approximately 7.7, that's probably not really approximately, that's specifically modeled 7.7 birds, would likely die or interact or conflict or crash into the turbine over the life of the project. This does include mitigation. The mitigation that has already been applied is that there have been turbines that have been removed, and so the number of likely impacts has greatly been reduced by removing turbines from high-passage areas. Then the mitigation associated with that is that the COVID management plan would likely result between 47 and 98 new birds being produced over the life of the project. So on paper, there is a, a benefit to the species. The problem is, is that marbled merlet are not a species that you can go out and just easily find their nests and monitor them and see what's going on there. So there's a great amount of uncertainty. So due to that uncertainty, we kept the impact at significant unavoidable, but on paper, it's clearly mitigated. The same conservative approach was taken with respect to raptors. In fact, it was interesting, somebody made the comment that they were disappointed that we didn't change our impact findings between the DEIR and the FEIR, that we didn't do more to mitigate impacts. Marble merlet is one of those circumstances where we clearly showed a reduction in the impact. Raptors are another one, where we refined, based upon additional information, refined the assumptions, and showed that there would be less of an impact associated with the raptors than originally assumed in the DEIR. It went from between 4 and 114 to between 4 and 29, with the assumption being that it would be more towards the 4 number. But because there's uncertainty, because the information that's available to us showed that there is a low raptor use number in this area, but that raptors are identified in this area, and that their usage can be variable, we kept the number, we, we kept the finding at significant unavoidable. One of the other concerns was that we're not in compliance with the UN Declaration. And Article 19 says this, and I read, "States shall consult and cooperate in good faith with indigenous peoples concerned through their own representative institutions, their own representative institutions in order to obtain their prior and informed consent." You know, one of the things that is important to understand is the state of California really did legislate this by adopting AB 52, is that it requires local agencies in conducting land use decisions to consult with the local tribe, to have government-to-government consultation. And one of the things that is the intent of AB 52 is to allow two governments to negotiate to see if there's something that can be done to mitigate those impacts. Ideally, one of the scenarios that takes place is that people will, or that each government will articulate that there are things that could be done to mitigate the impact. Too often when people negotiate, they negotiate from a perspective of win-lose. In win-lose, you either win or you lose, because there is no compromise. And unfortunately, this is a scenario that the Board of Supervisors is faced with, is that there is no option to search for middle ground, to search for common ground, it is a win-lose dialogue. AB 52 does not take the authority out of the hands of the Board of Supervisors. It does not take the authority away from the local decision-making body. And so what it does is it requires this consultation to take place, it requires the negotiation to go to its logical conclusion, it requires that all that information be considered by the local decision-making body. In this process, that has been followed, that has been fulfilled, and it is now in front of you as a decision point. The Pacific Flyway is, is clearly articulated in the DEIR as being, this project being associated with that. It is also clearly articulated that it is on the edge of an important bird area. And it's a bit of an irony that in terms of the Pacific Flyway, where migrating birds are going past the site, that in all likelihood, they're not going to be flying from east or west to east or east to west, they're going to be north to south. And, and so the way that the Pacific Flyway is oriented to the coast is it's much longer in its dimension from north to south than it is east to west, because the birds do fly along the coast. We heard many comments about the EIR incompleteness because there was only two weeks given for the FEIR, I think I addressed that already. I addressed the condor with respect to the concern for NEPA. I'd like to just briefly address two comments that were made by CDFW, and one of those was that they asked for a higher cut-in speed to protect bats on October 9ths. And that actually is already within the mitigation measure that allows the TAC to identify smart curtailment as a component of operational modifications. So what the, what the mitigation measure would already allow the TAC to do is that if this kind of smart curtailment, increasing the cut-in speed to 5.5, the wind speed of 5.5 miles per hour, then that would be something the TAC could require. So that's already addressed. One of the other things they ask about is that they believe the 1.7 number that comes out of the FRIC study is being too high. And recognizing that that could be the case, but that the FRIC number is the best number that's currently scientifically available, we used a FRIC number, but the mitigation measure allows the TAC to modify that number if it sees that being of concern in the future. So we believe that that has also been addressed. I just have a couple more comments, and I will be done. I, I think the other comments that have been made is that the SEQA is inadequate, the SEQA document is adequate, because it does not take into account future expansion and does not address the fact that there is a plan to develop a lot more wind energy in Humboldt County. I, as I believe I've already said, and this is true, this EIR and this project are for a discrete project. It has evaluated as a discrete project. This project does not enable other projects to come in and use this DEIR, it does not allow other projects to be approved. This is for a specific project, so that SEQA analysis is not inadequate, because it doesn't consider the speculation that others may want to develop wind energy in the future. There was a concern expressed about no oil spill response plan. So one of the things that the applicant will need to do, and this is legislation that's already in place, is they will need to obtain a permit from the County Environmental Health Department with the COOPA. And that will address the use of hazardous materials, how they store those, how they retain those, how they prevent spills associated with those. The, another comment was raised relative to the California Energy Commission, CDFW, Energy Rating Guidelines, Guides, and the site being a category four. The FEIR does go into a rather lengthy discussion of, of why it's not necessarily, or it doesn't need to be considered a category four, it's probably more appropriately identified as a category three. But those guidelines were, were intended to enable decision-makers to understand the nature and the impacts of the project. So these guidelines are really for you to understand the level of significance, and it really turns on this idea of whether or not there are unacceptable impacts of the avian species. The other thing that has been brought up is, and I'm going to address this, both of them, is relative to seismic activity and also geologic activity and soils. So the DEIR clearly articulates the Cascadia Fault, it identifies all the fault zones within the area, identifies the area as being seismically active. That is fully disclosed. It also identifies that the area is subject to landslides, that the area is subject to expansive soils. And so that, that's not unusual for Humboldt County, and it's not unusual for development. The issue is, is whether or not that would preclude development. Because the next stage of the process is to do the engineering work to determine how to address those soil types, how to address the seismic risks. So the next stage the applicant would come in would be with a formal engineered geologic study, showing the conditions of the soil for each of the turbine locations, showing what they're, what's going to be required in order to create a stable foundation to support the structure. That is a normal process, that does not mean the EIR is inadequate and not have that level of engineering detail at this stage. We are following a, a normal process. One of the other questions that were brought up is this idea of infrastructure sound and health impacts associated with wind turbines. One of the things that we included within your staff report, and it's, I can't remember which attachment it is, I think it's 14 or 15, 15 or 16, but is a study that was done by the County of San Diego. by the county of San Diego's Environmental Health Department Public Health Officer, that went through and looked at all of the information that is out there relative to impacts from infrasound, annoyance, sound, and nuisances associated with windmills and what that does on public health. Their study found that there is no correlating evidence to show that there are health impacts. And so that is included for your information. So as people bring that up, that is something that people speculate on, many opponents to projects speculate on, but it is not substantiated in the science. There was a comment made relative to impacts on salmon. Salmon is identified as being a species of concern within the DEIR, and that really comes down to concerns with protecting water quality, elaborate measures have been made to protect water quality, one of the concerns that has been expressed is the ability to do wintertime work. And that is why we actually added in a additional mitigation measure that goes beyond, which is to require water sampling. And if the water is occluded, if it is carrying too much sediment, the county has the ability to shut down work until that is completely resolved. And so that is beyond what's normally involved in a SWIP or another best management practice. That is really something to say that we're going to enforce this, and it's not a matter of if we see that there's a violation, you've got to come back to us with what you're going to do to fix it. It's like, no, it's not fixed until the sampling shows it's fixed. Comment was made that the city of Rio del was not included as an agency in the FEIR, and the reason that the city was not is that they're not a permitting agency in this particular process. And they're not an agency responsible for a certain resource in this process. Then the last comment I have, I believe, is relative to offshore wind. We did address this in the FEIR, and many commenters have identified that offshore wind should be an alternative. And as was mentioned by RCEA yesterday, their estimate is that offshore wind is seven to 10 years off, was the quote, or at least. In looking at the viability of offshore wind as an alternative, the research that I did, I found an interesting fact, that in 2005, there were six offshore wind proposals that were moving forward at the time. It's now 2019, none of those have been built. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. What we're going to do now is we're going to bring this back to the board, and what we're going to do is, everybody in order is going to be able to ask two questions at a time. Would like them to be questions, not statements or answers to their questions, to either the applicant or staff. You can do them that, so we'll do two, two, and two, and then if you have more, which I'm sure you will, we'll do two more. So with that, I will go to Supervisor Fennell. Oh, excuse me, I am going to close the public hearing now. Thank you. Supervisor Fennell?
Is this, oh yeah, great. So Director Ford, you mentioned that you had looked at some offshore wind projects that had been started in 2005, still were not running. I'm very familiar with the project that we're looking at now as part of RCEA, and also I'm involved with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management Advisory Committee, and I know that it's developing science, they're just now have developed new categories of lighting and painting and all of that for it to work better with the Fisherman's Sumo. I guess I would ask you, are you referring to all of the wind projects? Because there are some offshore wind projects that have gone forward on the East Coast, and now is when they're opening up on the West Coast. In fact, offshore in Humboldt is one of the preferred areas for offshore wind. And then the other thing that I would like to say about that is that the offshore wind proposed will be on a floating platform, which has been proven on the North Sea, so just, I wonder which are the ones you were referring to?
So I was, I'm referring to, and actually I probably misspoke, but there is one experimental project that has actually been built, and I'm only speaking to projects that have been built in North America. There is one 30-megawatt experimental project that's operational on the East Coast. There are no other projects in the North America
North America, right.
That are built.
Thank you for that, and I probably will have another question, but you kind of caught me off guard, so I'll let my colleagues go.
Sure. Just as a clarifier, I don't want to count this as one of my two questions, but are you talking about floating offshore or not floating offshore?
Floating offshore.
Okay, thank you. This is sort of a group question, but we have the letter with regards to questions from Epic in terms of, and how their specific list of issues are addressed, and I kind of, I would like a response to all of their concerns. And I guess my second question would be, we also have the letter from the bat experts, and I'd like a response to their concerns as well, enumerated. I'm sure you've read those and seen those.
Well, part of the question I would ask is which Epic letter? Because there are many.
Okay, I guess I forwarded you an email that I had received from Epic, and I can just go through the list if you want.
Sure.
Okay. So their concerns, sorry, when we both have our microphones on, we get some feedback, so I'll turn mine on and then I'll turn it off. So key project changes that they're concerned about, that they want to make sure, are the added bird TAC for all bird species listed and unlisted, which is revised MM 3.5-11 and 3.5-14. The improved strengthened authority of the bat TAC to direct monitoring and implement mitigations for hory bats. Added conditions of approval that require no herbicides, fungicides, aerodensicides during the project. Added specificity to the decommissioning plan, that provision that posted the bond will adjust for cost for decommissioning to 2050. Requiring Teragen, not just Humboldt Wind, to sign key project agreements. And then the commitment to using canine detection, not just human and bird bat mortality monitoring, was in there, was what I had received. And then with the bats, from the letter from the bat experts, convene a bat technical advisory committee prior to operation, which I think you may have addressed. Mitigation measures should begin at the outset of operation, I want those clarified, if not again. Improve pre-construction site use data, the project has failed to adequately survey bat usage at the project site, I think we talked about that, I want you to bring that back. And the rigorous standards for mortality monitoring. This letter from, you know, that's written by our local bat expert, Joseph Suezak, I think that's how you pronounce his name, is a bit detailed in what they're requesting, but I'm sure you guys have reviewed these, and I would like the responses to those fairly specific requests from them.
So relative to the questions about, from Epic, all of those have been addressed. The only one that I'm a little bit uncertain on is whether or not we have included the provision to require Teragen to sign all of the agreements. The only agreement that I'm aware of that's outstanding is the indemnification agreement, and then there will be a bond. But that bond, I don't know that that bond is issued by a bonding company, or there will be some other form of charity that we would look to collect on if, in fact, the mitigation, decommissioning plan is not implemented.
Just two and then rotate, yeah. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say, last night when I went home, I sent Planning Director Ford a list of multiple questions, and I want to say thank you, he answered many of them in his comments today, so thank you very much. One that wasn't on the list, I've been hearing, you know, we've heard state-of-the-art, and I don't know if this is for you or for the Teragen folks, we keep hearing state-of-the-art turbines, and then people, the speakers were often referencing inappropriate turbine design, and I'm just wondering, can you kind of clarify, when you call state-of-the-art, can you kind of clarify that?
Yeah, we consider, turbine technology has evolved pretty substantially over the last, over the last 20 years, I'm sorry, Randy Hoel again. Wind technology has evolved over a long period of time. We currently operate things that are even 17 to 19 kilowatt stuff from 40 years ago. State-of-the-art turbines to us are anything that are in excess of three megawatts. Turbine technology has evolved, and really the large megawatt class, beginning in, I think, the early 2000s, started going to 1.5-megawatt machine. From there, they eventually went to two megawatt, and there's been improvements from a couple different perspectives. There's been improvements on capacity, meaning that the total capacity of each turbine has increased. So for instance, if you were to develop a project 12 years ago, you would likely do so with 1.5-megawatt turbines. That has the implications of more ground disturbance. And so these days, we are using turbines that are in excess of three megawatts, and they can capture almost twice as much wind. In addition to that, they used to have 77-meter rotor diameters. These days, we're looking at 126 to 136 rotor diameters, meter rotor diameters, which means the efficiency has also increased per turbine. The turbines that we would deploy on this project are considered state-of-the-art because they are the best available onshore wind turbine that is available.
All right, thank you. I was getting the impression from some that they were outdated, so I do appreciate what you just shared. And then for Director Ford, this was part of the question, I think you did answer, but regarding the zoning concerns that were brought up by Beverly and, there you are, and I believe her husband as well, you covered some of where windmills are, you know, allowed, but there was an area that they mentioned where it says we explicitly say they can't export energy from a farm, something like that, and I'm just wondering, did you catch that in the comments?
Well, I think that is, has to do with when you're using a accessory windmill to support the site.
Okay, so that's where, okay, I got it, so not a conditionally permitted one, something that, okay.
Correct.
That helps, okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
And if I could, since Chair, there's one thing I didn't address relative to zoning.
Please, I'm sorry.
Is that the validity of the appeal. And somebody raised the question that this wasn't an adequate appeal because it didn't identify the zoning grounds for which the appeal is being issued. The fact of the matter is, is the, what the applicant did is they specifically responded to the reasons that are cited in the Planning Commission resolution as to why they were denying it. So for that reason, we believe that the appeal that the applicant has filed is absolutely appropriate and consistent with what the zoning ordinance required, because it's directly responsive to the resolution that the Planning Commission adopted.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. You talked about flight paths, and you were mentioning that most of the birds fly down the Pacific, down the coast. Are you aware that at the Eel River, there is a junction of major flight corridors, there is the Pacific Flyway, and then there is the Eel River connection for the Pacific Flyway to the Central Valley Flyway? And it is a well-known fact that the Eel River is a transit corridor for birds that want to transition from the coast to the Sacramento Valley. And these ridges are right in the middle of that pathway. I know we've talked a lot about mitigation measures for birds, bats, and condors, and raptors, but I have heard nobody talk about the fact that this is a very significant flyway as well. It's not just the coastal flyway, there is the Eel River connection, are you aware of that? I didn't see anything in SEQA or in the EIR, anything talking about that.
This is Susan Sanders with AECOM. The Eel River is not unique in being a travel corridor for migratory and resident birds. There's movement in all the major rivers in Humboldt County for birds, for resident and migratory birds, not just the Eel River.
Right. Well, the reason the Eel is so significant in terms of a flyway is because it cuts through the transverse mountain ranges that run from the southeast to the northwest. Like the Mad River, it terminates up above Ruth Lake, Redwood Creek terminates, Little River terminates, the Matols on the coast. So in our region, the Eel River, because of its diagonal connection inland, including the Bandusen River, which brings a lot of yellow-billed cuckoos inland from the coast up the Eel River through the Dinsmore area, these are well-known flight path areas that make interconnections between the Central Valley and the coast. So I'll take the answer to be, no, you don't think it's significant. I think it is significant, far above any of the other rivers in our local location. That's all right. Let's stay civil, folks, let's keep the clapping down, because we want everybody to feel respected and safe in this place, right? Thank you for that response. But in regards to flight paths, there is an additional flight path issue that has not been identified or brought up, and that is the fact that in Humboldt County, we get a lot of fog, and there are a lot of small pilots in our community. And if you're a small pilot, or you know a small pilot, you will know that many times small planes will take off from the Arcata Uric Airport or from Murray Field Airport, and they're not able to get back to the airport, so they will land at Hydesville. In order to make that approach at Hydesville, at that airport, it is very common for pilots to come in through what's called the Matol Hole, or the Bear River Matol Hole, which is a unique microclimate where, on many days, when the Eel River is fogged in all the way up to Garberville and Richardson Grove, the Matol and the Bear River will be free of fog because of the Cape Mendocino complex and the way the wind works off of those ridge lines. And so it is very common for pilots that are trying to get back to some safe landing to come up the Bear River, over Monument Ridge, and tuck onto the fog to get to the Hydesville Airport. They would, if this project was approved, encounter 600-foot towers. They would, if this project was approved, encounter 600-foot towers in that pathway of trying to get underneath that fog and get back to a safe landing spot when fuel is getting low and other kinds of things. Certainly, they could, you know, fly and land in Redding or somewhere else, but fuel is a restriction to that. So are you aware of that flight path significance in regards, regards to protecting human life?
We are not, and I have inquired with Public Works, and their talking to aviation staff is researching that today.
Okay, I appreciate that. So that's my first question is on flight paths. My second question, my second question is, are you aware of the Supreme Court ruling in 2015 that says the California Supreme Court holds that state agencies may not escape CEQA mitigation requirements based on failure of the legislature to appropriate mitigation funds? And yet, that's exactly what we're seeing here with this project with overriding considerations, where the argument's been made that we can't do those mitigations such as full decommissioning or other things, because it will cost us too much. And I've seen in the comment sections and the staff report and other places, it's often stated that that then makes this project infeasible. Based on this Supreme Court ruling, I'm not sure they're standing for that kind of an approach. It seems to me that there is significant court rulings that have occurred that identify that if you have a mitigate, if you have an impact, you have to mitigate for that. So my question is, what CEQA code are you using to justify that you don't have to mitigate for impacts based on cost?
Supervisor Madron, I think you're misapplying that case. That was the state of California in which there was the Monterey, University of Monterey Bay.
That's right.
And what they were arguing is that they did not need to do any mitigation because the legislature had failed to appropriate money to do it. It's not that the mitigation was too expensive or was unfeasible. They were just saying, hey, if the legislature doesn't give us money, we're not going to do it. That's not the circumstance here. The circumstance here is there is mitigation that is being applied, and so there is mitigation that, that is, is being implemented. So they're, they're not parallel cases.
So is there a code in CEQA that allows for you to have an overriding consideration simply based on cost? Is that actually identified in CEQA as an out?
Yes, feasibility, cost is a feasible thing to consider.
Could you give me the code number or the section number for that, please?
It is CEQA Guideline Section 15364. Sorry, I'm sitting under the mic, or the speaker, and I can't find a place where I'm not. It says, and I quote, "Feasible means capable of being accomplished in a successful manner within a reasonable period of time, taking into account economic, environmental, legal, social, and technological factors." Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, Chair.
Please.
Teragen. I think a comment was made on obstacle analysis related to airplanes. I mean, yes, I would, Supervisor Madron, through the chair, each turbine will require a review by FAA. They will do an obstacle evaluation analysis to determine whether a turbine is, is determined to be no hazard or not. Those are currently being considered. We have had Capital Aerospace Group review our plan, and we fully anticipate that those turbines not only be approved by FAA, but then everyone will become aware of them, so.
Thank you.
We're just realizing that he gets to ask a question, too.
I keep hearing about the aquifers, and both on Jordan Creek, which has a, which has a large feed, and then on the Eel River, and then the Zanzis and Jimmy Fay's property. What, are there any guarantees in writing that those aquifers are going to be protected, those creeks are going to be protected, and mitigation measures in case there is an issue? I guess that would probably go to planning and, and the applicant.
Yeah, I think the question was asked by Supervisor Fennell yesterday about how that's going to be addressed. And that's where we proposed a new condition be added to the project that would require that the structures installed on the site be evaluated by hydrogeologists to ensure that the aquifers and the water sources of adjacent properties and residences not be adversely affected.
Okay. Run.
Yeah, but we have to get a 401 water quality certification from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and that basically will not allow the project to impact any of the aquifers on the ridge.
Right. What are the repercussions if it does? I'm not supposed to speed, but I do sometimes.
In short, any violation of any permit is an enforcement action by the appropriate authority having jurisdiction.
Yeah. All right. And then the second one was the applicant, because it came up, there's two different things, the turbines and the blades, and they're state-of-the-art. It has been asked by me to ask, where's everything being made? It was said yesterday, USA, and I'm not sure which parts were being made in the USA, or all of the, everything being made in the USA. I heard Colorado. Maybe we can give a clarification on that.
Yeah, so Supervisor Bone, original equipment manufacturers rely on a global supply chain. Vestas has not only tower, nacelle, and blade manufacturing capability in Colorado, but they do also, you know, source from Europe and Asia. However, I will state that these, the blades, there's blades will be fabricated in, in Colorado for the project.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Fennell?
First of all, I think that Supervisor Madron was referring to Ronerville Airport, not Hydesville. Just happen to know it, because it's where I come from. The blades, how long are those blades, Mr. Hoyle?
Supervisor Fennell, through the, through the chair. If you have a V-126, a Vestas 126, what that denotes is 126-meter rotor diameter. So each blade in that instance will be roughly half of that, which is 63 meters, roughly times three feet, so you're talking roughly 200 feet long, each blades, the same sort of math carries to a V-136 as well. That would be slightly over 200 feet per blade.
Thank you. And for Director Ford, we talked a little bit about the decommissioning, and I've heard several different answers about that, you know. I think you said that you would require complete decommissioning, or there was that question about that. But I also heard that decommissioning would have to follow standards that are set 30 years from now, the current standards at that time. Can you explain that a little bit more, please?
Yeah, the way the permit is structured is that 30 years from now, they're going to have to apply to do something. There's three different options there. Option one would be to continue to use the site as it is. Option two is to repower the site, maybe make some changes to it. Option three would be to take everything down and decommission. So in each one of those circumstances, that's a new permit, and it's a new permit under CEQA, requires separate environmental review.
And so, so there's really no way that we can say at this particular point, let's say if they were going to repower and use only some of the turbines, how they would deal with the decommissioning of that particular turbine that they were going to take out?
Well, to the extent that it's a concern right now, there are certainly conditions that can be applied in terms of what the, the board wants to see with respect to decommissioning. You know, I know there's concerns with not leaving material on the site.
Right.
I know there's concerns with what's going to happen with the concrete foundations. And, and so certainly, the way the condition's written right now is that they, they can't leave things on the site. It requires complete restoration. The one thing that's in the project description is leaving the lower portion of the concrete structure and taking it down, I believe it's up to three feet. It is within the discretion of the board to require the complete removal of that. The benefit of that, obviously, the soil's deeper and restore the complete natural ecology. The downside of that is that that requires more truck trips up and down the road. It requires demoing more concrete, and it requires not only hauling the concrete out, but it requires hauling dirt back in. So there's trade-offs there.
Thank you.
Let's see. There was, these are kind of two random questions. There was a, one related to sort of the visual impacts of the, of the development occurring basically at the base of Jordan Creek. And so I, if we could get a little bit more description about how that's mitigated, so it, you know, there was a concern that that's going to impact the, sort of the view or the experience of a park visitor. That's my first one. And the second one was the impacts of, basically related to lights on the, on the turbines, both related to, well, mostly related to insects and bats.
So the first question, the operations and equipment yard that will be down at the base of, of the hill near Jordan Creek, that will retain some forested environment around it so that there is a visual buffer between the park, between the freeway, and, and that particular facility. In terms of the, the birds and the, or the, I'm sorry, the insects?
So is your question about the comment that came about that if you're doing pre-operation monitoring, you need to do it under conditions similar to what the turbines would be like with lighting? Was it that comment?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and then also, yes, I mean, that's, and there was also a comment, I think, that was related to sort of the insect, that's attracting insects, right? And so by that attraction, there's going to be attracting of, of things that eat insects. And so I was just wondering what, if, how that's addressed.
Right. I think the commenter's point was that you need to have conditions that'll resemble what the actual turbine conditions would be like. The lights, it's my understanding that they're flashing, and I don't know that flashing lights attract insects. But whatever the conditions are, the Tactical Advisory Committee, the way the mitigation measure is structured now would be in place within some, I think, 90 days after project approval, and they would review the plan for acoustic, it'll be maybe acoustic monitoring, it might be modus towers, it might be whatever the TAC decides is the best way to assess bad activity before the project is put in. And that's exactly the kind of thing where you could say there needs to be an element of lighting to accurately replicate the rotor conditions that'll prevail during operation. So I think it could be accommodated with the existing TAC review of the pre-operational monitoring plan.
And just as a follow-up, and I'm going to sneak in just a quick third question, which was the Identiflight that was mentioned and the request for Identiflight, and are, is this project implementing Identiflight? And if not, why not?
So Identiflight, it's a camera-based detection system. It's currently experimental. It's been installed in two, in two wind resource areas on an experimental basis. It is an option that can be used as a mitigation measure if the bird TAC decides that there is, it's used mainly for, it's used for eagles right now. The bird TAC decides that it's warranted, Identiflight could be installed at the wind resource area. There was a discussion, I think, at the first or second Planning Commission, there were no plans to install it wholesale throughout the entire wind resource area because it was very expensive and an experimental system, and what's that? It's, it is eagles, it's focused on, on eagles, yeah. But it is an option that the TAC can implement if warranted based on the data, the post-construction mortality monitoring data. Oh, oh, and there's a request to address the comment, I think, that came up on the effect of the turbines on insect populations. Yeah, and, and we've provided some information in one of the staff reports for that. There is a study that was done in Germany that, that showed there was significant accumulation of insects on blades, so much so that it would create a drag and reduce the effectiveness of the turbines, of the energy production of the turbines. There is no way to assess what the impact of insect fatality on insect populations would be, and that's what the study in Germany discussed. There's a 2019 study that evaluated the decline of pollinators and other insects worldwide that was a meta-study. It looked at many other, many studies. Wind turbines was not included as one of the sources of insect mortality. It wasn't mentioned in that study. Climate change and mainly conversion of native habitat to agriculture and urbanization and climate change were the main sources.
And I actually read both of those studies. They were, the last two things in the staff report, and I was just kind of, I guess, I was wondering what the nexus was, and they were just put in there for informational purposes, or what, what were, what was the?
It was a response to a question, a comment about just that topic. What's the effect of wind turbines on insects?
All right, thank you. I'll have more later.
Well, since Supervisor Wilson asked three, I'll just ask one, because actually, you took one of mine on the light, so thank you. And this is, I guess this is looking into the future. Director Ford, we've heard about wind energy ordinances, and some people feel they should be done before you move forward, or we move forward, or a project moves forward, and some, it's more like developed along the way. Can you give me a sense of what your thoughts are on that? That wasn't on the list last night. Sorry.
It's okay. So having an ordinance, having guidelines, having direction is always easier to evaluate projects upfront. Whether or not, the question that has been raised is whether or not you should consider a project without having an ordinance in place. And the fact of the matter is, is that there are ordinances in place right now, and the zoning ordinance currently identifies within both the TP zone and the AE zone that wind energy generation are conditionally permitted uses. So it does anticipate that these kinds of uses can be permitted within these zones. Would it be desirable to have more direction? Would it be desirable to articulate things that the county's concerned about if there is the perception that this will be a reoccurring pattern? Yes, it would. But can we, on a case-by-cases, or on this case basis, evaluate what the impacts of this project are and whether it's appropriate? Yes, we can.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I spoke at length yesterday about the potential for papers to be filed on the Bear River Ridge as an archaeological historical district, if those papers had been filed, would that change the way this planning is happening? I mean, I do recognize that you guys took a conservative approach in saying that it was a significant area. But if, in fact, those papers had been filed, would that change these proceedings, do you think?
I think it would have more to do with whether or not a determination and assignment of significance had been made. of significance had been made, and not just the filing of the papers.
Certainly. Okay. On the full decommissioning, as I mentioned earlier, it seems to me that if there's a mitigation measure available, it ought to be taken, especially if it's not that expensive. I will point out that with the recent agreement for the union hiring, that that added, in my estimation, approximately $50 million or more to the cost of this project. Is that reasonably accurate?
That is, Supervisor Madron through the chair, that is absolutely not accurate.
I had seen comments that this project was a $220 million or so project, and now it's estimated a $300 million project. I did a quick math calculation of the difference between, kind of nominal wages of $25 an hour versus prevailing wages, which by the time you add the actual wages in from the Department of Industrial Relations, plus benefits, plus the overhead on that, you know, you can be at $100 an hour pretty quickly with prevailing wages. The worker's getting $50, $60 an hour for this type of work. Perhaps it's even higher. At any rate, when I do the math on that, it certainly adds up to many multiple millions of dollars. My point is that you said that you could not afford to fully decommission the sites, and I think the comment was that it would require you to haul a lot of soil back up on the hill. Now, I've actually done restoration of these kinds of sites in my career recently, in the last five years, where I removed trees, from encroaching trees on prairies, dug them out, digging 10 to 15-foot deep holes that were 20 feet diameter in order to get whole trees out of the ground to aid the ranchers for increasing their prairie ranch lands, and flew those trees by helicopter down into the river for salmon habit that. I've done six acres of this in the last five years, and it cost about $50,000 per three acres to fully restore the site. Now, the soil's still there, and I don't understand why the soil would be removed from the site because that, that costs money and trips. So if you reduce the truck trips of hauling the soil off the site, store the soil on-site outside of the turbine pad, remediate that soil pile appropriately so there's no erosion and sediment leaving the site, then you've got the soil there to put back in the hole when you're done. And the concrete can actually be recycled for riprap on what will likely be landslides on Jordan Creek Road that will need to be remediated. And the rebar has a value as well as steel in terms of recycling value. So it just seems to me that the cost of $100,000 to fully remediate these two, these sites, these 47 pads, is definitely within the range of feasibility economically. And as said yesterday and today by our planning director, that's fully within the discretion of this board to require that. I think at the very least, out of respect for this land, that's exactly what needs to happen. So, I'll ask you again, are you willing to accept that mitigation measure as a way to fully remediate the site at a tune of maybe $100,000 or less to do it?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. We've done an exhaustive analysis of this. We are currently dealing with this issue at other wind projects. We have come up with numbers that at least what is asked for is infeasible. But this is what I will propose. We will commit to, to up to $50,000 per turbine of decommissioning. And we will agree to that with your approval today.
So, a majority of that $50,000 would be in taking down the towers and the blades and hauling that off-site, is that correct?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. Our experience is that the actual turbine equipment is actually, is actually typically taken down for free, for scrap value, et cetera. So, a majority of the $50,000 that I mentioned would be utilized for any, you know, subsurface type of decommissioning.
We're going to, because it was brought up so many times and you've tried to clarify it, and I think you have, but I'm just going to ask one more time. Explain the tax credits one more time. I, it, it seems to be a, and, and, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I heard so much talk about tax credits, tax credits, tax credits. But at the same time, I heard we could all go solar because if you're low income, the government would pay for it. If, if it's multifamily, the government will pay for it because it is energy that is renewable. So I, I, I don't know if there's a disconnect there or one for the other. So, could you explain that a little more to me?
Supervisor Bone, to the extent that I can clarify tax policy, I'd be glad to do so. There are renewable energy incentives that are available. The primary one for, for wind energy is, they're called the Section 45 credits, or federal production tax credit. So for each megawatt hour that we generate, we get a corresponding tax credit, and it's approximately equal to $23 a megawatt hour, the current rate. And we get that over a 10-year term. How we utilize that tax credit is it actually is a direct reduction in the price of power to the end user. With regard to, and, and there's an expiration of those tax credits that has really been agreed to by, by Congress. And, and they are currently stepping down from 100% of the, of the $23 to 80%, to 60 to 40, then going away. As it relates to, and, and, and I would say, each, each step down, you know, translates to roughly a 10 to 20% increase in the price of wind energy. Now, as it relates to solar energy, there's a couple of things. The first is, there's a 30% investment tax credit. So for every $100 that you invest in solar, you receive $30 upfront as a tax credit. And those tax credits are available to utility scale and also rooftop installations. Those are also priced in to the cost of power ultimately offered to the customer. Further, and this is an important distinction as it relates to renewable energy as economic development. Utility-scale solar has been afforded a property tax exemption in the state of California for the rest of time at this point. So the primary difference between a wind project in your community and a solar project in your community is a wind project will provide the property tax revenues and related benefit.
Okay, thank you. And now, it was stated, I think, by a couple of different people that a different project has been sued by, sued for condor takes or not mitigating for condors. And since we are going to be, the UROCs are going to be bringing back the condor back, which will run up and down the coast. Have, have you guys mitigated for condors before, and have you been sued for your mitigation?
Yeah, Supervisor Bone. We, the, the party that was sued, California, or the Center for Biological Diversity, CBD, did sue the Tawhon for securing an incidental take permit related to condor. Teragen is an active, we actively develop in and around the Tawhon tribe as a part of our Tachpi development. We pursued a project on federal land. We were able, via consultation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, to secure an incidental take statement related to condor. It doesn't allow for a take. It actually highlights what happens in, in the instance of a take. We never were litigated over the receipt of the first incidental take statement related to a wind project in the state of California. I would also further state that we have led, and we continue to lead, what is the most active geofencing initiative in the state, in the state of California for identifying condors and basically utilizing our services to provide information to other generators in the area of when condors are present. Matter of fact, we have here with us, on our team, Kevin Martin, who I mentioned as a Teragen employee, he actually received in, in a couple of years back, I think it's the Adam Linehan Award from NGOs, those very NGOs that govern, that pay so much attention to condor. So, we have a lot of experience. We've coordinated and consulted extensively with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on the issue and other projects. And so I, I appreciate the question.
Thank you. Supervisor Fennel?
So, this question comes from a resident of the Riedel area. Will turbine operations affect the wind over Riedel, Scotia, Pepperwood, Holmes, Latchivley, Redcrest, and the Eel River Valley? Will it affect the wind patterns over the valley? And will the project affect the natural cycles of the area? Director Ford?
So, we've done some research on that, and what we have found is that it will mix the air. These are not propellers, so they don't force air. They're driven by the wind. What happens when they drive the wind is, is that the air does mix going through the turbine. And actually, some studies have found that it increases the CO2 on the other side of the turbine, actually enables primarily crops to grow better. There haven't really been studies in North America to address how the effect of that on a forest, but the scientists are finding that it's actually beneficial for, for vegetative growth.
As a, as a follow-up to that, there were concerns that somehow or other, they, they would either heat or dry the air so that it would have an effect on the redwoods and...
There is, I mean, the most honest answer I can give you is there is not conclusive information on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone? Yeah, it's Teragen. I, I would just like to, the propagation, the predominant wind flow up on the ridge is, is, is north to south, is the predominant. That's not to say it doesn't come from other directions. So, when the wind comes from north to south, there are computational fluid dynamic models, there's other deep wake array models, and typically the wake, meaning that the impact of the disrupted wind typically extends to somewhere a little bit, a little bit past 40 rotor diameters is what we use as a rough, as a rough, you know, measure.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
We had discussed earlier the issue of would a project like this expand if it was to be approved? And could a moratorium of expansion be placed countywide as part of a condition of approval for this project? Is that, is that a feasible option?
So, a condition on this project would not accomplish that. If it's the direction of the board to pursue that, the board could give staff direction to go and develop a moratorium.
Hold on, let me cross it off the list. The next one is just, this one's Amy, I got this, and I, I apologize because I, I have not, I should have asked you this earlier. Could, if, if this is a project, and this is a question also for the, for the applicant, if the county wanted to be an investor of this project, be actually an owner, to actually leverage our, our ability to leverage funds, which we, we discussed at an earlier meeting, not particular to this, but in terms of like, to bond, to be ownership, say, I'm just going to throw out a number, $100 million to bond, to, to be an owner of a project, not, if it's not this one, another one. Is that a possibility to be, to give us actual ownership stake in a project like this? Whether it's this or any other?
Supervisor Wilson through the chair. As it relates to public ownership, I, I think there's, there's a couple of things that need to be considered. The first is, in order to accrue the federal production tax credits, the sale of the electricity must be made to an unrelated party. Okay? So, what that was meant to do is stop those people from, you know, basically gaming the, the system. I, I think if there was a, and then from a tax perspective, there's also a concept of public or tax-exempt sort of ownership actually ends up impacting the ability to utilize the full federal tax incentives. And the full federal tax incentives are, are not only production tax credits, but also the ability to claim accelerated depreciation under the, under the project. One of the ways to potentially consider, you know, bond proceeds and uses is potentially from a prepay of energy upfront with adequate security. And if you prepaid, that would mean that a, you'd basically be funding future energy delivered to you for free. But that gets extremely, extremely complicated, and it, it takes a lot of time to negotiate.
And I was more interested in sort of ownership stake in terms of the ability of, and I've, there, there are municipal and publicly-owned utility infrastructure, it does exist. And so, and I assume there are some times where there's a hybrid, and what you're saying is that's a very difficult thing to make a hybrid between a public and private partnership related to this sort of, this sort of infrastructure? It's about if it's serving itself?
Yeah, the, well, the, the one thing that you would want to do is make, make sure that you fully utilize the renewable, or that you can fully utilize the production tax credit. So, in order to do that, you actually need to bring in someone with a tax appetite, so someone who has income to offset those tax credits and associated losses coming off. There, there are structures where you can establish, these projects are your, are these turbines yours, these project, these turbines are ours. We can establish tenant obligations in order to allow for the parties to operate together. But once again, that gets awfully, awfully complicated and impacts a lot of structuring related to project.
My second question in this round of questions is related to, there's a couple of comments related to generators as part of the infrastructure. And could you address what, you know, help us in terms of the, and the public understand why that keeps coming up and why that might be a concern in terms of gener, there, there's an assumption or a description that there's generators at the bases of these structures that are lighting the, the lights on it and those sorts of things, and can you, and it may be erroneous, but we heard about it at least a few times. And the associated fuels that go with those generators, assuming this is accurate information.
Yeah. Supervisor Wilson through the chair. Supervisor Wilson through the chair. These are wind turbine generators. They use wind energy to turn a drivetrain that goes through a generator. And that generator is actually up in the big nacelle, the big white housing.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. What I'm thinking is, I mean, I guess what I had heard, and just, and maybe it was a misinterpretation, because this is why I'm asking this, because I didn't read it in what, that there was to light the lights on the actual device, that the energy that you're producing, are you saying the energy producing is the thing that lights the lights? It doesn't have a separate generator associated with that? Okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm it because I'm just, that is part of what I, people were saying, and I was, you know, wanted to get confirmation that it's not really a thing.
Yeah, Supervisor Wilson through the chair. I would like to provide you a complete description. The power to lights and other ancillary facilities related to the project is called auxiliary load. And when the project is operating, the auxiliary load will be self-provided by the project. There is, there are batteries by that, small battery backups for the FAA lights. But as it relates to if there is no power, if there's no wind being, turning the turbines, then there will be situations where through our point of interconnection, we will be pulling grid power in to power those facilities through the grid, through the substation, through our transmission line, through our collector substation, back up to the turbines.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me see what's left. Too many papers. So this is going to sound like a kind of a strange question, and I apologize, Randy, for getting you into this one, but this is for folks at Teragen. You know, I've talked to Kern County specifically, a couple supervisors, both supervisors Perez and Scrivener. And I know the planning director had been quoted in some other things I've read about how Teragen has been a very responsive company who basically is upstanding at your job and they have really good relationships with the company. But I do know that Supervisor Madron had mentioned an unnamed source at Kern County that did not think the same way. And I'm wondering if you have any idea what those concerns might have been about? It's really hard when there's an unnamed source and you can't, you can't really defend yourself against it. But I'm curious if you can think of anything that's gone sideways or that would cause that comment?
Yeah, Supervisor Bass through the chair. I have met with all five Kern County supervisors within the past two months. No one's ever mentioned any concerns about wind energy ordinance or otherwise. I have talked to not only our consultants, but also received direct feedback from certain members of Kern County. And I think the characterizations are a little embellished.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to follow up because I know that I've had several conversations with them as well. And then this would be, I guess, for John Ford. We kind of talked about it earlier, and I think you might have heard this from another Is there some type of, I don't know if you'd call it mitigation or set aside, whether it would be something the county does with the dollars we receive or the company, to potentially provide for grants for solar or, you know, kind of help expand, expand our velocity towards reducing our greenhouse gas emissions? And I probably didn't explain that very well, but I think you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I think the question is, is with the increase in tax revenue or with the tax revenue that comes from this project, is it possible to use that revenue to facilitate additional renewable energy resource development within Humboldt County?
That's exactly what I said.
I thought so.
That's what my brain was thinking.
That's what I heard. And the answer to that is yes, that is a policy decision that the board would take. And that is a policy decision really that then would be apart from this project. Obviously, it is presumptive that the project would be generating that tax revenue. But then how the board chooses to allocate that, create programs to facilitate additional renewable energy development, those are all policy issues that are completely within the realm of the board.
Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
And yes, just to clarify that last point, I was asked by this individual to stay anonymous, so I'm respecting their wishes. And they spoke highly of Teragen. I did not mean my remarks in any way to suggest otherwise. What this individual said was that they were very surprised that we would consider moving forward with a project of this magnitude with a conditional use permit, special permit, instead of having a wind energy ordinance in place, which they did for the projects in Kern. So that was the point that was being made, is we do not have that. Our planning director responded to that and talked about how an ordinance would be more overarching, whereas what we have here is very specific stuff with this project. And she, oh, there I told you, she did say that, you know, it just seemed like a responsible and appropriate thing to do is have the ordinance in place first. So that was really what that comment was about, for clarification. You're welcome. The really big issue here, I mean, there are lots of issues, right, with the IR, with birds, bats, eagles, all kinds of different things, right? And I recognize that there's been a tremendous effort to try and mitigate a lot of those things. And I respect and appreciate that. But the big elephant in the room, or the eagle in the room, or the native tribes in the room, or whatever you want to call it, is that the tribes are not supportive of this project. And it's been stated numerous times that no mitigation has been offered by the tribes to deal with that. I offered something yesterday, and I, you know, in fair disclosure, ex parte, I've had no communications with tribes in regards to this project. It just seems to me, I mean, as I said six weeks ago, we were in this room finally signing the papers to give Tullawatt Island back to the Wiat after 170 years of genocide. And so here we are moving forward, you know, proposing to move forward with something on what is clearly ancestral land and is clearly sacred to the tribes. It's been documented over and over. And as I've said, in my experience, it easily would qualify as a historic district, archaeological district. It's just that the state archaeologist has not done that. Nobody has done that yet. And so I will ask again, is there any way that the landowner and Teragen might consider a mitigation measure for this? I recognize that the tribes have spoke out and have said, we don't want this in any way, shape, or form, and I respect that. But if my colleagues are going to vote for this, and we still don't know where we're all at, right? I think some of you are assuming I'm in one camp. You don't know that. I mean, I'm asking questions to try and get clarification and details. Nobody's voted yet. So, you know, and I respect the Lane, the Russ family and the fact they have been steward in this land for a hundred and some years. I work with ranchers a lot in my work in doing watershed restoration, and I admire them for their incredible common sense and their work ethic and many other values. There was a lot of talk about fragmentation that might occur by the landowner and concerns about that. Well, one of the ways to prevent fragmentation of this land, instead of going into pot farms or subdivisions or whatever it would be, to do a lands agreement with the Wiat. Now, Green Diamond on the Klamath River is doing exactly that. There's a federal bill going through Congress to provide funding to the Uroch tribe to buy back significant portions of their ancestral territory in Blue Creek and up the Klamath River. That absolutely could be an option here. It's not necessarily something the tribes would support because they don't want this to happen at all. I say that again. But if it's going to happen, if this board chooses to approve this project, it seems to me that one thing that could happen would be, instead of leasing the land for 30 years, and I think any of us that have ever rented know that it's a lot cheaper to buy than it is to lease or rent. In fact, rents and leases tend to add up to a lot more than purchasing the property. And you're talking about a 30-year lease here. So I would like to know if the landowner and Teragen would consider purchasing the land with an immediate conservation easement to the Wiat tribe and the Bear River tribe? And at the end of the 30-year life, or as soon as this property is put to bed, so to speak, and fully decommissioned, that you would hand that property over to the Wiat and the Bear River tribes? To me, that is one way that you could mitigate this. It doesn't make up for it. It still means people are waiting 30 to 50 years for this to happen. And I'm not speaking for them. But it just seems to me that that is an incredibly huge unmitigated impact that we've offered nothing. We've offered no mitigation for that. So I ask you, would you consider?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. The decision to lease or sell is the landowner's decision. We are tenants on their property, just like we're tenants, and to be tenants on HRC. The indications that I believe that we received yesterday from the underlying landowner is I do not think that they want to consider such a transaction. And we fully support our landowners and because they have certain property rights that they want to preserve. And so if that situation changes, then we might be able to have another discussion. But we support our private landowners. I would also state that while for some, it's a no-brainer to buy versus lease, there are some practical economic implications of that. You cannot depreciate land. You can deduct lease payment. So it's not always a no-brainer, and it's not always, you know, one way or the other. But at the end of the day, our transaction structure with HRC and the Russ family is determined by them.
Yeah, I hope that people consider it. My second question, I appreciate that our county staff have an indemnification agreement ready for us to approve and sign as our first action today if we do take any actions. And that protects the county from any expense related to whether or not we get sued, whether or not we approve the project or deny the project. If we get sued as a county, the taxpayers are covered via this indemnification agreement whereby the county would not pay a dime to defend itself. The Teragen would pay the cost of that defense. Is that correct, the way that works?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. That is absolutely how it works. We are indemnifying the county, and I have executed the agreement.
And so those costs would cover any staff time involved in defending ourselves, et cetera, all costs associated with it?
I think the county council can provide you advice on what's included in the indemnification agreement, but my commercial understanding is yes.
That's my read of it. Okay. Hang on, I'm wrapping up this question. Excuse me. Okay, so we'll leave it at that. And I think I heard you say, but I just want to have you state it again for the record, that if we approve this project, we are likely to get sued. I mean, I think that's evident by the public comments that ran three-fourths to one-fourth opposed to the project, not only here, but during planning commission hearings. There's been a lot of information presented about problems with the IR. There's a lot of unmitigated impacts with significant concerns and overriding considerations. There have been some biases shown by some of us. So it seems to me that if we approve it, that we likely will get sued. Whereas I heard that, I heard you say that if we deny the project, Teragen does not intend to sue the county. Is that correct?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. That is indeed correct. And can I just talk about the other pending, or I guess threatened, there is no pending or threatened litigation, I guess, at this point. But what I will say is that we fully understand and understood what we were getting into with regards to potential litigation. We have reviewed the comments and we understand, and we are willing to fund any defense of it. And we believe the characterization of the EIR as not adequate is not true. We think it is a strong document, and we will continue to develop the project even if there is potential litigation.
We've heard the talk, how many turbines approximately do you operate in California? Round numbers, within 100?
Can I get within 500? I would say about 1,500, 2,000. I mean, we're currently taking down 1,400 turbines and repowering them, so we operate a lot of different types of technologies.
Understood. And that's since the year Teragen's been around for, when did your first one go up?
Teragen was formed in 2007. But when we were formed in 2007, we were formed with some assets that had been operating since 1986. So the people in our company, while Teragen is not, you know, 40 years old, we have people that have been operating turbines, and these are 40-year-old turbines, in the high 90% availability. And those people are currently on our ONM staff.
How many have caught on fire?
To my knowledge, no Teragen turbine has caught on fire.
Then the other thing, real quickly, we're talking offshore, and I firmly believe that looking at the technology and realizing that there are operations on other coasts, we're talking about the California coast, so I think the seven to 10 years is a more than conservative approach. But realizing that, we keep talking about if that 9.0 or 9.5 happens and they fall over, I think it's going to be the least of our worries. But there is 400 gallons of, and I'm not sure if it's insulation oil or hydraulic oil in the turbines, is it insulator oil or is it hydraulic oil? I thought I read hydraulic oil.
Yeah, Supervisor Bone. There is oil in each turbine. It's not a substantial amount of oil, and there's also typically mineral in the main transformers. With regard to seismic events, and I would also say that I think we have an SPCC, which is a spill pollution, that one I don't, that acronym I don't know as well. But we have an SPCC plan that we design to, that if there are any spills, that it will be self-contained. In addition, the turbines will meet the building code, and it's a California building code for seismic design. These are well-studied and well-known impacts as it relates to turbine towers and seismic events. They've been studied a lot. We've had folks from DNVGL on our team before analyzing seismic impacts in other places and Humboldt.
Okay, and what I'm leading up to is I know there's a variable amount of lubricating oils available, and there is a whole green line that is purely environmental friendly. And I was just wondering if we could require those, or at least put all effort into looking into them, because I know they are required for the offshore. So I didn't think the usage would be that much different, even though after they've been in operation... been in operation, they'll have heavy metals in them.
Yes, Supervisor Bone, to be honest with you, I'm not the person to talk about specific oils and amounts in a specific turbine, but it's not a whole lot of oil. And typically, we do utilize, I would, we don't utilize the worst-grade oil in these things. So other than that, I can't provide any specifics on that, and I apologize.
That's fine. Supervisor Fennel?
One other question from Mr. Hoyle, if you wouldn't mind. So again, I also spoke with some of my colleagues in Kern County, and specifically referencing you, they've enjoyed very good working relationship and said that your company's been really good with the county. But I also understand that there was one project on a ridge that didn't go through. Are you familiar with that, and can you let me know why that happened?
Supervisor Fennel through the chair. You know, there are some projects that we start pursuing, and we don't pursue them all the way. I think the project that you're referring to is the Panamid project. And at that time, with the best available data to us, and along with our condor experts, with our knowledge of the expansion of the area of condors, we did not feel comfortable with the technology at that point in time. And so we ended up, due to those significant concerns, not pursuing the project.
Excuse me. So as a follow-up to that, then, Mr. Hoyle, is it your, has the situation changed here, then? Have your techno, has your technology gotten to the point where you could address those concerns now?
Yes. Supervisor Fennel through the chair, yes. Technology has come a long way, partly because of our team. We have Alta Environmental Services, which actually provides condor detection services to other regional projects in the Tatchby area. And we would look to utilize, if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service believes that they can reintroduce the condor in Northern California, that we can utilize a lot of those geo-fencing techniques that we are currently employing and have employed for the last six years in Southern California.
If I might ask a follow-up, then, were that to be the case, would it be a question of retrofitting something that's already in there, or would be including it in the design to begin with?
No. Supervisor Fennel through the chair, this would be an external design. This is not a design as it relates to the project. This is, in simplistic terms, we sort of geo-reference an area in and around the project, and based on condor activity, and we have a condor action team that is in place. They will go out, and they will try to get a visual of the condor. And depending on direction, speed, and a lot of other things, our operators will not only be on high alert, but they can take certain actions if needed. So, no, there is not a special blade, there's not a special retrofit. These are things that are done outside of the wind project.
And so the certain actions would include turning the turbine off, something like that?
Yes. Supervisor Fennel through the chair, yes. The turbines, in the case, if a condor would ever come close to a turbine, we would, and has been our policy, we would curtail a turbine.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
I'm going to go back to the GHG numbers, if we could, for a minute, and review those, because I really want to just get into balance what we have as those assumptions. So I have a question for Ken over there. Are you getting ready for this? So I want to review what's the total amount of GHG, basically, total amount, you know, that this project will produce in its construction total, and what the annual reduction in GHG this project will do, and I need the lifetime GHG reduction. So those three numbers would be very helpful in terms of perspective. And I am going to go under the assumption, and to reiterate, that the loss of sequestration related to the natural environments to be impacted are part of those equations. Reiterate that again.
Yes, so I have the numbers for you. 246 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent is the annual amount of GHG that is generated by the project. Of that total, 156 metric tons is related to construction activity. So that will cease within 18 to 24 months. For purposes of calculations, we amortize that over the life of the project.
Can you just give me a sum total? Do I have to do the math here on my calculator in front of me? Sorry. I guess I do. Okay, hold on a second.
It sounds like after the project's built, it's 90,000 metric tons.
So 246 times 30, all right, 7,380 seemed appropriate for the total. Or is it just the construction, which is 156 times 30 equals 4,680,000 metric tons?
Over the life of the project?
They're not going to build it for 30, excuse me, but...
Right. The construction emissions will stop within two years. So it would be 80, so what is the delta is 86 metric tons of carbon dioxide is, or CO2 equivalent is the amount annually that is associated with operation?
Okay. So basically, within two years, within two years, you're saying this will have basically made up its carbon footprint?
No, in the first year, it will have, it will be carbon neutral.
It'll be carbon neutral. So even if you're 100% wrong, it will be two years. If you're 300% wrong, it'll be three years. And even if you're 1,000% off, that would be 10 years, which would be the third of the life of this project. Is that not incorrect?
I guess I don't follow you. I'm not, I'm not, the answer is yes, I'm told.
All right. So I just, I mean, this is based on, and then the next question I have is for, not for you, but it's Matthew. Is Matthew still here? Because I have a question for Mr. Marshall. Wait, hold on a second. Mr. Supervisor Madron just asked me, he said he doesn't think that those numbers take into account forest removal and prairie removal. And I've asked this three times, and so can I get an answer that...
Master response, number nine in the final EIR addresses that.
Yes, and the answer is it does account for those things.
Correct. And even with the loss of capacity, there is a, in the first year, it is carbon neutral.
Have we received comments that have any math associate with them that refute this calculation? I just want to know, that actually have calculate?
None with mathematical calculations, that I recall.
Please, please.
John, do you, you've received all of these comments. Can I, I just want to really...
I do not recall seeing anything with any kind of equations refuting the findings of the EIR.
Okay. I want to go back to Matthew. You are, well, you're, Humboldt County has many climate scientists, energy scientists, people who do a lot of work in this, including through Schott's Energy and others. Is there any, do you, do you feel like that these numbers are robust in terms of the climate gas reductions? Or, excuse me?
So I, that works. I have not, like, run those calculations and verified that every number is correct. I can say that, you know, there's good analysis on, you know, the range of life cycle climate impacts of different energy generation sources. And the two, you know, least life cycle emission sources are wind and solar, and wind's a little bit ahead of solar on a, you know, technology-wide basis. Now, every project's going to be a little bit different on what the numbers are, but, you know, I think to your earlier point, even if you're off by, you know, an order of magnitude, you know, there's going to be a net greenhouse gas reduction benefits. I think that part of it is straightforward.
The, we still, there's still, you're not going anywhere. Stay right there. Nice try. In terms of energy independence, grid tie, the sort of, we keep, we hear about, you know, relying on the, on the, on the energy of, or the grid of PG&E. Whether it's PG&E or not PG&E, does production of this type of energy in its location help or detract from our energy independence in terms of, you know, us as an island related to specifically, I guess, only electricity? And detail as much as you'd like.
So, again, speaking kind of at a high level, you know, the power is going to be put into the broader grid at the Bridgeville substation. And so, you know, if there was, you know, under normal conditions, that power's generally going to be flowing towards Humboldt County and offsetting our, you know, local energy needs. If there was a public safety power shut-off, you know, that would really then come down to, you know, whether they needed to de-energize the lines between Bridgeville and the rest of the, you know, sort of coastal side of things. And I couldn't say, you know, that would be dependent on what the fire risks were, of whether there was, you know, a need to de-energize that line in particular versus farther to the east.
And then, if there were mitigations associated with this project that go beyond what, you know, kind of really cut into the feasibility of this project from a financial perspective, what do you, and I'm really asking you a political question here, do you think that your board, which includes someone here on this board, has, would consider in the rate structures, the ability to have, you know, do mitigation in terms of, and apply that to the rates? Is that something that's in the mix of our, that could be in the mix of our decision-making process?
So that is a political question, and it would be up to the RCA board, not myself as staff. What I can say, and again, not to speak for the board, but, you know, past decisions that the RCA board have made have, you know, tried to balance, you know, energy priorities with other community impacts, and that can be a challenging thing to do. I would say, you know, I will take the risk of speaking for my board, that I think, you know, in particular, the concerns of the Wiat tribe are something that I feel confident that all of my board members do not dismiss and would take very seriously. And, you know, whenever we've engaged in a planning project or a project that we're actively engaged with, we try to start with engaging local tribes, and so we've always taken that as an important factor. And so to that end, I think, you know, RCA would be, you know, I suspect 100% willing to negotiate the terms of the price of the power purchase agreement that we're, you know, looking at for the project to accommodate, you know, minimizing impacts to the community. Now, you know, there's only so far, you know, there's boundaries on that of what, you know, we can do within, you know, the confines of providing affordable rates. But, you know, I think, you know, if it was a difference between adjusting the price and having a less good project, we would rather adjust a project and the cost accordingly to minimize impacts.
That's all you need to, for me, anyway. And just as a, so, as a follow-up to, well, I mean, I guess I'm laying down a card or two, and we can have this discussion later, and I would prefer to do this maybe after lunch, to have an actual deliberation beyond questions. But it kind of puts out there, you know, what can we do from my perspective, if it's even possible? And I don't know if it even gets my vote necessarily, but, you know, what can we do to extricate this project from Bear River Ridge in respect, in response to the comments in the DEIR from the Wiat tribe? And I'm putting that out there, and we'll, and I think I've come probably pretty close to the end of my questioning.
Did you have a response to that?
Yeah, Supervisor Wilson, through the chair. We have had a dialogue with RCA regarding moving turbines on Bear River Ridge. That price is not like a dollar a megawatt hour. It's an incredible, it's material. I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind a little bit is that RCA is not taking the full output of the project currently. We are having to bring in at least two other power purchasers. And to the extent that mitigation measures are put on the project that increase the cost and the ability to market the power, that endangers the ability. We need other power purchasers, other than RCA, to end up building this project. And I would just like to say, I guess the last point would be, I get very concerned when power, when there's a negotiated power, purchase power price that is significantly above market. RCA, after we build this project, RCA, I do not think currently is a credit-worthy entity. We look at the credit-worthiness of community choice aggregation companies all over. And to the extent that there is something that is materially above market, no matter how well-intentioned it is, we will need someone to pay for that and be there until the end of the project. And so I just bring up those practical things, and to inform your board that our origination team, who interfaces with RCA, brought this to us four months ago, three months ago? And we've, at least in my mind, I've been commercially down that path.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot of questions. I, at this point, left. But I am curious, one of the things we were hearing a lot about yesterday was that a two-year job doesn't really mean anything in the long term, and that it's, you know, it's silly to be basing things based on economics because it's just a two-year job. And we all did receive a letter up here that you probably all have maybe read, because we have papers, it's hard to see if you could find it. They were talking about what does, you know, often a two-year job turns into a 40-year career? And how does that happen? And I was going to ask if I could request John McIntark, I can't say his name right, if he could come up and kind of explain that, or, because I know we didn't get to do that. And that's with your, whatever you decide, Mr. Chair.
I will facilitate.
What's the question?
Two years. We kept hearing about this two-year project, and it's just a two-year project. But the letter we received was like, well, no, it actually can turn into a 40-year career. And I think, could you just give a little bit of qualification of, you know, the progression and what you see in the construction world? And, because I think it's important for people to know that it isn't just a dead end to your job, but it leaves other things.
Okay. So basically, like the letter says, in construction, we value all work, and we look at a six-month project as a long-term, a long job. Our job is to work ourselves out... Our job is to work ourselves out of a job and to do it effectively and efficiently. So, we go and we build something and we complete it, and then we, we hopefully have another job to go to after that. That's what construction's all about. So, when, um, in our world, if somebody says this is a two-year project, for us, that, that, uh, that's sustainable. And we're, we look at that as, as, you know, paying our bills, we can look forward to maybe a Christmas or two Christmases that we will get through. Uh, and then that allows us then to plan on, on the next project. What happens too after that, or even during the project, um, other jobs come up, there are other contractors that are working on a particular project, and you would get to know that contractor, and then that contractor's got other projects after that project. And then you would link up with that contractor through hiring halls or directly from that job site. Um, and also then, of course, you know, you're working side-by-side with other individuals who then also leave that project. And you, usually when you're leaving a project, you say, that was a good job, I'll see you on the next one, maybe. And it might be 10 years when you see that person, but there's many jobs in between. That is normal construction world. So, when I say a two-year, or job could lead to a 40-year career, that is our career. Going from job to job, project to project, locality to locality, and, um, you know, that builds into a 40-year career.
Thank you.
So, of all the projects that you've done, is this the most divisive that you've experienced?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. It is definitely one of the most spirited, yes.
Okay. I accept that term. And you did mention that in one project, you were working with a Native American entity? I forget what you mentioned on that. Tahoms?
Bone.
Tahom?
Well, Supervisor Madron through the chair. We have had interactions, um, with tribes before, and we've had positive interactions. At least in Tatchby, there are up to two tribes that we typically interact with. We actually just received, uh, on one of our solar projects, uh, which is a, uh, 650 megawatt solar project, we just received a letter of support from a tribe, uh, this past week. Uh, as it relates to wind energy development, uh, we currently have a 250-megawatt wind energy project on a lease signed with the Campoe tribe. We are towards the end of that process. We're through our second year of our relationship with them. Uh, and the EIS, uh, is, is being issued with a rod expected, a recorded decision, which we, which will mean that we're towards the end of that process, uh, in the next 45 days. So, yeah, we, we've had positive, uh, relationships with, with various tribes.
In, in, in any of those situations and working with tribes, have you ever, are any of the sites proposed on sacred land where they opposed that, and then you ultimately worked out an agreement?
Supervisor Madron through the chair. A majority of the activity that we have done has been actually on reservation land. Uh, and so, uh, we have, uh, they typically have their own environmental monitors, uh, and, uh, we also do, uh, cultural assessments, et cetera. But they have highlighted, you know, where you go and where you don't go upfront, and that is outlined in, you know, before we even execute a lease with them.
All right.
Hang on a second. As, um, this project lives or dies up here, um, it certainly doesn't seem like a rushed project because, maybe because Supervisor Fennell and I were contacted first because of the, all the, I actually saw the map of the 102 sites they were going to check, and they covered quite a bit. You know, ma'am, I'm really glad that you keep yelling, but it's really doing nothing for your cause, so, thank you. Um, and so, as we looked at these sites, and they looked at these sites, um, they were telling us where they may go. I don't know anything about wind, um, but I know that they got permits to, uh, study it and found out where the best place it was. And this is where it was. And I know, I mentioned yesterday, eight years ago, when the Shell project was here, it was across the Bear River Ridge. And at the time, it was going through Ferndale, and most of the response or objection came from Ferndale. There was no other, there were other objections, of course, but nothing to the extreme of going through Ferndale, even taking down a Victorian house so they could make a turn, improvements on the road on the Wildcat, and road closures, extended road closures. So, um, I, I told them that those were unsatisfactory locations, but I'd like a little more clarification. Was there, I keep hearing to move it, and I, we asked you not to go on Bear River Ridge, and I know you're still using three miles of it compared to 12.7 or whatever it is. Was there any site that is even close to being comparable or usable? It, it doesn't, it's kind of like a boat, doesn't do you any good to build a boat if there's no water, so...
Supervisor Bone. Uh, in, in our initial evaluation, we looked at a lot of criteria, but the number one criteria was wind. And then we ended up, uh, actually executing leases with some other parties, uh, and we ended up putting some SODAR units up. SODAR units are sort of interesting because they use sonic technology, uh, and they're just little boxes, and you go take them out and they can measure the wind. And the wind was not robust in a lot of those areas. It was not a commercial wind resource. Just to give you a little idea on how wind works, one meter per second doesn't seem like a whole lot. It's 2.23 miles per hour. But every tenth of a reduction in the wind resource is actually, essentially, it's a cube of the wind speed, meaning that if you lose, if the reduction is small, the impact to wind energy capture is fairly large. And the other areas that we looked, we looked at nine other different ridges within the And I, I would say that these are the best, uh, this isn't the best wind resource we could find. It was actually the fifth and sixth rated out of the nine. Uh, but for the reasons that we highlighted before, um, the wind resource, it has a, it still has a quality wind resource. It has, uh, landowners, and we have access to transmission. And when you line all three up, uh, these are the best sites for the project. They're not necessarily the best wind sites, uh, they are the best sites for a commercial project.
Understood. And Supervisor Ford? And I'm pretty familiar with the Pacific Flyway, Central Valley, Marysville, Yuba City, the Central Flyway, all of these areas. I've actually hunted the confluence of the Eel River and Van Duz and everything else. I had never heard of the Eel River Flyway, even though I do know that there is a few birds that, I can't even, I can't even guess, I'm not an expert on birds. But I know when I go down there during the fall season, there are some birds. Is there, is there data on an Eel River Flyway? Is it a designated flyway? Or is it?
It is unknown to our team. Uh, we consulted with the biol, biology staff that's here, including Susan, and Sean McAllister, who is a local biologist, local bird expert, and he's unaware of it. Um, we went to the extent of Googling it, and it didn't show up. So, we have no record of it.
Supervisor Fennell?
No, I, uh, I'm ready, I'm ready for a break if there are no more questions, and then I'd like to get into deliberations.
We will take a 10-minute break, and then bring it back to the board for deliberations and decision.
I did have a ask.
Actually, I... Do you have an answer on the turbines?
Okay, it was, um, brought to my attention, I thought a clarification, that the, the general plan was more for personal wind turbines rather than a large-scale wind farm on your general plan interpretation. You want to, could you clarify that?
Sure. And, and I would go to, uh, policy number three to start with, which identifies that the county shall support renewable energy development projects, including biomass, wind, solar, run-of-the-river, hydroelectric, and ocean energy consistent with this plan that increase local energy supply. But I would submit to the, for the board's consideration that these are not contemplating individual accessory kind of, of wind power. These are, are considering commercial-scale power plants. Particularly when you're thinking of wind power in the context of also being hydroelectric, which is typically a dam, that's not something somebody would normally have on their property. Uh, ocean is, is clearly not, uh, a private kind of, of facility. Those are, um, commercial-scale projects that are, are being contemplated. The, uh, I'm looking for the other policies, but the other, uh, policies have to do with, like, uh, policy 15, coordinating with local agencies, communities, and landowners to assess potential wind and offshore renewable energy development. So, clearly, wind and offshore are being considered in the same sentence. Those are not accessory kinds of uses. Those are large-scale, commercial-scale wind energy generation. So, I, we've never seen these general plan policies to apply to only private accessory wind projects.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. It was asked.
Start talking. All right. This is, will not be the end of my deliberation for sure, but, because, uh, you can tell from my notes, it's kind of all over the place.
You need to speak into the mic more.
I will speak from the mic into the mic. Doing what I can. Doing what I can. Well, um, I just want to start with the construct of where we are today and in this moment, and how we perceive, um, what we're talking about here, which is energy technology and its application into, um, a natural space and, um, and a cultural space. And, um, and from the construct or the context of where we are right now, in this moment, and, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, um, uh, corporations and capitalism and those sorts of things as, as the constructs. But there's just even the construct of our society as we are today. We live in a society that is completely constructed of, from and about cheap fossil fuels. Everything, everything we are is about that. Our land use development has been completely constructed on cheap fossil fuels. Our clothes, everything around us is basically, has been derived from cheap fossil fuels. Cheap from price, but expensive from the environmental impacts that we are, that are coming. There's just no, no denying that. And we talk about sacred places and desecrations, and, and I, and I would submit that we have desecration all around us. We drive in mobile desecrations. They are desecrating the planet with pollution. Our roads are made from desecrating, just from destruction. Gas stations are desecration. We have a highway that goes across Tulawat Island. A highway. And we drive across it almost without thought because we're so immersed in this, in this, uh, in this construct. And it's super painful to have this conversation. I have been, um, not sleeping for maybe, excuse me, at least six weeks because of the conflict, the internal conflict that we see happening to us today in the culmination of this, where we're at. It's, it's pretty heavy-duty. I mean, we're talking about the, you know, what could be the, the death of all civilization and on the backs of the destruction and genocide that has occurred, uh, in, in our own backyards. And so, I'm just framing the, sort of, the thought process where I, where, where I'm coming from. And to be quite honest, I'm going to talk a little bit today, right now, and I'm going to let others on my board talk, and I still am having a hard time with where this is, where this is going. So, um, I want to talk about, you know, and, and when we talk about, you know, the technology and where we're at, you know, almost everything, the discussion we've been, have been, having today is what this thing that we're talking about is going to have in terms of its impact. And with very little discussion about the trajectory of where we are and what we do in our everyday, uh, with, with or without this. If I look up at the lights that are lighting this room, 50% of that energy comes from natural gas or fracked natural gas. 25% comes from biomass, also GHD-producing, and 25%, I don't know, comes from somewhere else, more or less. And I don't even really, to be quite honest, I don't know where the, where those electrons are coming from. And that's going to, that's going to continue. I don't know about anybody else, but I, I don't, I was yesterday and today, or, you know, just turning off every frickin' light I could do. I, every, I mean, I'm just kind of freaking out, you know? If we could only be, go through this process every time we put gas in our tank. If we could only look into the eyes of indigenous people that have been dealt, that have been impacted, and I mean, every time we put gas in our tank, right? Not just here, but all over the, the world, right? So, to say that this is a sort of very, you know, that this is a really easy decision, that it's just so, you know, that is, that's sort of the difference between having an opinion and making a decision. I'll tell you that. There's a big difference in, in my world at this moment. Um, and, uh, I also want to express my experience a little bit, so there's some context, so people can understand that. I started as a, an environmental engineer here in Humboldt County some years ago. And probably then one of the first projects I worked on was with, at, at Potawat Health Village. And my wife and I, my wife's a project manager, I was an environmental engineer, did the design work for that, worked real hard with, you know, a collaboration of, 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 of American Indian people here. And I learned a lot about culture, its adaptation, its resilience, and the resilience of the people of this community. And I don't, and I mean native people in this community. And from that, I worked on Indian Island project. I, I worked Cheryl and Leona and many others for years, trying to, I mean, the first thing I did with that project was there was an erosion control emergency, there was erosion issues that needed to be dealt with. And, and, and working with the tribe, we worked on that both in temporary and long-term solutions for erosion control on that project. And then the long-term coastal development permit to basically clean up and try and protect that site for future use. So within that context, again, resilience and adaptation. And I also want to kind of point out what I've observed in sort of the, in the last twenty years of this, is a, is a, is a people who have been, that I have worked with, who have been through a lot of trauma. I mean, a lot of trauma. Generations of trauma. And that trauma really has, it does pervade through the generations. It's, it's not, some people want to think things are just the past and it's not real, you know, or whatever. But it's, it, it, it's generational, and it is absolutely for real. And I don't want to lose my train of thought here, but that, but, oh, the, on the kind of the other side of that, I've seen a, a, and I, I'm going to use a very Eurocentric term, but a renaissance in native culture in the last twenty and thirty years. I mean, amazing. It's been fantastic. And it has, that resilience and that, that has been a, a wonder and a, and a, and a, and a privilege to been a little part of and been to observe and, and, and to share. And what I mean to share is this, this renaissance, again, maybe not quite the right term, has been shared by our native neighbors, by our, our indigenous people and by, and, and, and has been a net, a huge benefit to the entire community. I've seen nothing but value to, to our community in that, in, in what we've seen, in that. And so part of, I guess, part of the, of the frustration, and I, you know, I have to check myself a lot. Cheryl knows this. I have to check myself sometimes. Because I definitely, you know, can carry some, you know, of my, I'll just use it, privilege or my upbringing that is not met, you know, necessarily of this place entirely. In that, or even just my sort of engineering mind sometimes, where everything's kind of in a box and has to be really linear. And, and in that context, there's a lot, I, I heard a lot of frustration about the trans latency of what was sacred in this process. And I understand the, the, the issue with that. In that we are trying to move projects forward in this context of, and, and when there seems to be trans latency in that, in what is sacred, it's, I, I, I'm not so, first, frustrated by that, but then I remember, you know, we, in sort of this culture, which is maybe non-native, because we have trans latency in sacred too. It's called, we can use flags. We move them all around. Plop them down, sacred, you know? You know, we plan for new cemeteries, they become sacred. So there is trans latency in that, and, and it's okay, and it's part of that adaptation. But at the same time, there's also very longstanding traditional knowledge and understandings that have been recreated in, and have still, have absolute, that doesn't detract from the value that, that they need to have in that context. So I'm just putting forward that, you know, I really do share in that understanding that it, you know, we have to be understanding that a project like this, if it's to move forward in, on what is considered a sacred site, that trauma is, you know, that's real, and we have to either, you know, we have to account for it in some ways. And, and it's shared by a lot of people here who have maybe come from native cultures themselves and not necessarily here. And so I want to make sure that we're accounting for that too. And, and, and those things matter. And I, you know, there was one student that came here yesterday who said he'd been here four months, which I thought, and I thought his, I thought his comments were probably some of the best comments I think I heard of the whole day. It was kind of this external observation, which was that, you know, that, that in this process, the tribe was not taken as seriously and in terms of, as a negotiating partner in, in terms of this process. And there's a big mistake made in that regard. That is a big error. And, you know, I, I think we have to, we have to do more to, 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 to do better in that. But that doesn't mean it wasn't, you know, an intentional mistake. It's just, you know, we have, just like I mentioned yesterday, that the, 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 we have a long ways to go, external, you know, to this, to this process. So I'm willing, I want to hear what other people have to say, and I apologize, this is kind of a long thing, it's very cathartic for me. I appreciate everyone being my therapist today and listening to me in that regard. But, but that's what's weighing very, very heavily on me. Because when I ask those questions about the, the global impact, that's also real too. So I just kind of went through, you know, sort of this cultural part. The global impact is absolutely real. This is, there's nothing about that that's, that's, we can't take seriously. And, and the scale of this project, which is what makes it hard, is that it's scaled, is that it also has a very significant impact related to our climate change. And it might be insignificant in the total thing, but we're on, at a global scale, we're, I, I, we're at war. I mean, I don't know what to say. I mean, it's a terrible word to use, and I'm sure I can find another one later that's probably more appropriate, but we're, we're, we're at an emergency. It's real, real deal. And there's going to be issues with that. And, and we are making decisions. I hear people saying, well, don't make a decision, you know, based on fear. You know, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a hard thing to do. We're, we're all in fear of loss, whether it's loss of the, of, you know, cultural issues and identities and, and those sorts of things, which are fundamentally real, and whether it's issues of, you know, the future of, of all children related to our ability to survive on this planet. And, and I certainly understand why people would feel like, you know, why would we build these big industrial energy things so that we could, you know, light, you know, and, you know, lights for gas stations or lit, lit up billboards in town here or whatever, you know, just stuff that just seems so ancillary and so dumb, you know, considering how, what, what we're up against. So I don't know, I'm, I'm willing to hear from my other commissioners on, excuse me, sorry, supervisors on this. Because I, I'm, this is tough, this is tough. I, and I hope, I've heard a couple of people here today, I heard in the next couple of days, say they've lost some sleep over this. I know my other supervisors here are losing sleep over this. This is an existential crisis that we're in culturally, environmentally, you know, on a local and global perspective. And I really wish I wasn't here today. That's all I can say for now.
Supervisor Bass.
Well, first of all, we're glad you're here today. Because it's been, it has been pretty much everything you just said. It's one of those issues where you're going to lose friends and create new enemies you never knew you'd ever have. You know, during this process, you get the calls and emails saying, you know, I've always supported you and I'll never vote for you again. And I, I hope all the folks out there know that if any of us are making that decision, a decision based on whether we get re-elected, then you don't want us up here. So, you know, it's really uncomfortable. I'm in restaurant business, I'm a people-pleaser. This is not, this isn't going to be a day that, where that works. So I'm kind of going, going on a, oddly cathartic also. Someone mentioned that, you know, it was a three-fourths to one-fourth split of people that were speaking regarding the issue. And I'll have to say, yesterday it was pretty darn even until after lunch. But as people started getting really unruly in the crowd, it really intimidated people. There were people here that were scared. And I know you might laugh or you might scoff at that, but it's real. And, and, you know, I think we have to learn to respect everybody's opportunity to speak. And I just didn't see that happening, and I, I felt that, you know, it always does kind of skew it, and it's not unusual. I mean, after nineteen years of various elected meetings, it's not the first time I've seen it. To say I'm conflicted is definitely putting it mildly. You know, I, I was looking for tums in my house, and all of them were old and they turned into powder. They don't do any good at that point. So I think we all have that challenge. You know, yesterday, several people mentioned the city of Eureka giving back the island. And I think that was the right thing to do. I was with the city of Eureka when Cheryl approached Peter the first time. And maybe we didn't do it quite right. I know you're Cheryl, I don't know if you're here. But, but, you know, it was the right thing to do for multiple reasons. But for me, it was because of the atrocities that happened on the island. And it was also governmental, and it wasn't somebody's property. So we went, went back to the rightful, the rightful people. And I'm, I'm happy for that decision. At the same time, while the city of Eureka did give back the land, they also sent a letter of support for this project. And I'm not sure how many of you who mentioned them giving back the land are aware of that support for this project. And I called Austin Allison, a council member, Allison, last night. And I said, how, how did you rationalize this in your brain? Because I don't think people are going to understand. And he says, they're two separate issues. And that's, and someone's shaking their head. I'm telling you what Austin said. So in his belief, they were two separate issues. And he says, how can we afford not to act? Those aren't my words. It gets to the point where the benefits outweigh the burden, or do they? And it's a balancing, we have a scale that we are trying, it's an invisible scale, and it keeps tipping back and forth often. Many people said some really, well, people, there were actually a lot of wonderful speakers. And I do want to thank especially the, the young people that came out. I mean, the youngest was probably about nine. I don't know, we couldn't see her over, him, her over the podium. All we heard is a voice, but it was wonderful and strong. And all the college students and the high school students, I mean, whether we agree or disagree on something, that is so good to see them showing up at meetings. But yesterday, towards the end, a gentleman named Nate reminded me that, you know, your district benefits, but it doesn't pay the cost. It doesn't bear the burden. So I had to think about that. I have empathy for Ria Del. I've been the mayor in the city of Eureka and city council for quite a long time. It's not the first time this has come up, where somebody, a city does feel that they've got the bigger part of the load to lift. And as an example, I hope that some of you may be able to see what I'm talking about. Eureka, being the county seat. Generally, it's a place you're going to find more criminal activity. You see a lot of book and release and people wandering around the streets because they can't get back to where they belong or where they live or where they need to be. That's because the city of Eureka contains the county jail. You'll also notice that there are a lot of people experiencing homelessness within the city of Eureka. And that's because Eureka has the services. You'll see people experiencing mental health issues more frequently in Eureka. That's because we have the services. You'll also see persons experiencing addiction issues more in Eureka. And that's because we have the services in Eureka, or I should say, the city has the services. Traffic congestion and accidents. Eureka bears the burden of their population growing from twenty-five thousand dollar, twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand people to fifty thousand people each day as people go to work and go shopping. And the accidents and the traffic don't exactly make EPD really happy. It's a problem. They bear the burden. They're also the largest producer for Measure Z, the sales tax, public safety sales tax. And by my estimation, they get pretty much the smallest piece of the pie compared especially to what they bring in. But they bear the burden. They actually, you know, may not like it, but they understanding is there, that is this for the county as a whole in case of Measure Z. So that's what I'm trying to say sometimes, and I do have empathy for a community that feels like something doesn't belong there, and they don't want view, and it could cause problems. But I understand it's, I think there's, I look at it a little bit differently. Anyway, I think at this moment, I'd like to hear what some other thoughts are. If, if I can have you pass this along to the next person.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments of the supervisors that have spoke so far. You know, change is in the wind, right? Yes, and how many years can a mountain exist before it's washed to the sea? Yes, and how many years can some people exist before they're allowed to be free? Yes, and how many times can a man turn his head and pretend that he just doesn't see? The answer, my friend, is blowing in the wind. The answer is blowing in the wind. I think you all know where that came from, right? So divisiveness. I've got a number of things I want to talk about here. This is a really difficult decision for all of us up here, as well as our entire community, because I think we all share in this process of making this decision. It is not easy. I look forward to the day when projects are brought forward to us that build our community and bring our community together, rather than divide us and cause people to be, be so afraid that they speak out. And, and it might seem unruly, but if you think about what a lot of people are experiencing, I can understand the anger. I don't appreciate the disrespect. I think that there's been a fair amount of that. And I, no matter how divisive this is, at the end of the day, it's incumbent upon each one of us to try and continue to respect our neighbors and do our best to deal with whatever decision is made here today. So again, I look forward to projects coming to us that really get a very vast majority of our community to support those projects. This is not one of those options. I recognize that climate change is very real. And so in thinking about options and how that relates to jobs, this is a couple of years, and I know it's very important work. In, in my career, I have brought over a million dollars into this county for the last thirty years for watershed restoration from outside money, state and federal grants, that I years for watershed restoration from outside money, state and federal grants, that I use to hire local labor, more often than not paying prevailing wages. So, I am a major supporter of workers, I'm a laborer, I still have calluses on my hands from the work that I've done in my life. But there are many options to create these jobs, and to help our community become more resilient and self-reliant. Offshore wind, maybe a few years out, but it's coming. And more than likely, offshore wind here will just be put into our islanding approach, because to get that power out of the grid, that capacity doesn't exist. And to run a cable down the coast across all the canyons, like the Matol Canyon, and all the other canyons that go down to ten thousand feet deep, just right off the coast, makes it almost impossible to run a cable to make that connection. And the amount of power generated will not fit on the transmission lines as they sit today, or even with the upgrades. So, offshore wind is a great opportunity. The technology's moving forward, and that would absolutely be providing power directly to Humboldt. Small hydro. Uh, I don't know how many of you have seen these, but, uh, Whirlpool has come up with these little tubs you can put underneath your culvert outlet, and it spins the tub and creates energy. It's a new hydropower technology that has just come on in the last couple of years. Many of us in rural Humboldt County could be producing power with these little whirlpool tubs. Trinidad, I've worked with the city of Trinidad for a long time, and they have a water supply up Lufenholz Creek, and they use electricity to pump that water. Their plant is sitting at two hundred feet, and there are springs that are at five hundred feet that could be gravity flowed down to the city with a redundant line that would produce power on the way and make their water supply plant completely energy-free. So within each community, whether it's Eureka, Trinidad, Garville, or whatever, there are different solutions that might work for those communities to help us get off this reliance on fossil fuels and other things. I support that. I believe there will be new wind power techniques coming along, and there are already some of them, but I think this is gonna take a major advance over the next ten years, moving away from propellers that kill things to something that captures the wind without those problems. I look forward to that. Wave energy, very exciting stuff. We certainly have a lot of wave power here. And Israel and Denmark and many other countries are actively, rapidly moving to implement wave energy power. Forest and prairie restoration, because as been mentioned here many times, it's not just how we produce our power, but how else are we sequestering carbon? And protecting our forests and our prairies and ranch lands is one of those ways. And a lot of the work I've done in the Matol, removing encroaching trees that were simply a fire danger, reducing grasslands for local ranchers, have been turned into byproducts for fish habitat, large woody debris in the streams, and in the process, restoring prairies with deep native bunching grasses. The landowner that I worked with in the Matol over the last five, six years doing this will say that those areas where we dug the soil ten feet deep and then replaced it and replanted are the most lush grazing areas on their entire property. That's why I spoke highly for full decommissioning and restoration of that prairie. Roof top solar, which has been talked about a lot, microgrids, electric buses. For about a little over a million dollars, we could make our entire transit system in Humboldt County free to everybody. What would that do in terms of our transportation, fifty percent of our puzzle in terms of our energy use? We'd have to add more buses, and they'd all be electric. So, increasing mass transit and transportation equity, so by, by making that transportation free, we help the poorest amongst us to be able to get around through our communities. And then trails, it's certainly another way not only to stay healthy and meet your neighbors, but it is a way to reduce our energy footprint. And as many of you know, I spent most of my adult life working on trails in Humboldt Just because someone doesn't support the Terregen project does not mean they're not concerned about climate change. I would submit to you that I think everybody that spoke to us in the last number of days, everybody in this room today, actually is very concerned about climate change. And I heard that mentioned over and over again. And you know what? I was surprised at the incredible unanimity of everybody accepting that climate change is real. That wasn't the case before these hearings in the last two days, and I frankly am amazed at that. And I look forward to you all coming before us when we're putting our climate action plan together and figuring out what are the elements of implementation in that climate action plan that we need to suck it up and basically deal with some very hard choices about our land use activities and other things. So, thank you all for embracing the fact that climate change is in fact real. And I look forward to that community's support for that. What were you doing?
Happy hands.
Happy hands, that's great. You're so benevolent. Um, all right, so, that's some of the options, and those would create jobs over decades doing those things. So there are lots of opportunities for jobs. This isn't the only opportunity. Fragmentation has been spoken about, and the concern over these open space lands being broken up by patent parcels and certificates of compliance. And this was mentioned extensively by the chairman of the planning commission in his remarks when this project was denied. And I thought it was amazing, because he was responding to fragmentation as being a very big concern by the Russ family and others, and yet this very individual is the one that's doing over sixty percent of the patent parcel certificates of compliance in our community. So that was quite, quite odd for me to hear that coming from the person that's doing most of that. Vulnerabilities to suit, that weighs heavily on my mind, and I appreciate that we have an indemnity clause in place, because I do believe the EIR is inadequate. I appreciate the hard work that's been done by staff and the consultants, but it still has many holes in it, many problems. In particular, the unmitigated impacts that can be mitigated, but we're simply not willing to pay the cost to do that. I have a real problem with the overriding considerations. So, here comes an eagle, here comes a condor, alert, alert, shut down one turbine, really? I mean, you know, when condors and eagles come in, they're soaring, they're playing on the ridge, right? They're playing with the wind. And they don't just sit there in one spot at one turbine, they're flying along the ridgeline, picking up the, uh, the thermals and the updrafts and the rest of it. And I don't know how long it takes to shut a turbine down, but when this thing's going at so many hundreds of miles an hour around and around, I know when I stand there waiting for my washing load to dry and it's still spinning, it's a long time, right? And I suspect that the turbines don't shut down immediately, that they take some time to do that. And I frankly don't believe that just shutting down one turbine's gonna protect that eagle or that condor. Some of you may notice I'm wearing eagles. So I think there's a lot of problems with that, and somebody spoke about how the Andetta plate thing is, is not gonna work here, because we don't have the cellular network to be able to provide the access to get that information in a timely way. I see that as a, as a real problem. I mentioned the flight path dangers earlier about birds and planes. I do think fire dangers are very real with adding more high tension lines through high fire risk areas, uh, and those things are also of concern. There are some conditions that I think could make this project better. I think full decommissioning and returning these prairies to not only their pre-development condition, but to a desired condition with deep bunching prairie grasses that would store more carbon, and ultimately returning that land to the Wiat. Those are really important things. And I, I find it hard to accept that those are not, there's not a willingness to work on those things, but there's been lots of excuses why we can't. I do like the idea of this thing happens, um, of any of the income that comes to the county of going to grants to provide solar assistance to people in their homes, so we can move forward with that more quickly, and that also creates a lot of jobs. Curtailment was described in the EIR and other places as not being feasible because of the loss of revenue that even three hours a day might represent. And yet, as I just explained with condors and eagles, I don't see how we're gonna get away with this, and I guess we're gonna wait till we kill a bunch of things and then react. That's the way it seems to be set up right now. I believe that the area on Bear River Ridge should be a historic district, and those papers need to be filed. I also believe that reparations might be appropriate. I noted that on many other wind, I have a hard time calling them farms, wind factories, um, people were paid for the impact of their aesthetics and their views, you know? In some places in Montana, people are getting a check, several hundred dollars at Christmas for their family. How do you pay reparations, or how do you deal with the Euro, the Wiat stuff and Bear River? I, I, I don't know how you do that. You know, on many levels, I wish we could delay this until we could have more negotiations with the Wiat people and see if there is some pathway forward to them getting that land back, whether that's in five years, ten years, or thirty years. I'd like to see that documented and moving forward into the future, because I think we've all learned about how important this area is. If you didn't know it before, hopefully you now see that that is a very important thing. So, these are all things that I have concerns for, and so I, I would be supportive of delaying the project until those mitigations could be worked out for Riedel, for Scotia, for the impact that they're gonna have, and more importantly, to Bear River and the Wiat tribe. So again, I guess I'll just close by saying that I'm really glad you're all climate believers now, and I look forward to working with you on processes in the future.
Supervisor.
So, as everybody has mentioned, this is a very difficult decision. I've been thinking about it a lot, working on it a lot. I've been writing on it, and I thought it was gonna be, gonna take a long time, but having listened to my colleagues, it's probably relatively short. First of all, I wanna say that I have been, had, heard some pretty harsh words thrown my way during the public comment. But I'm in this position because I am by nature not afraid of challenges, or at least I'm willing to take them on. And one of the challenges that was brought to me was that I had a conflict somehow because I was on the board of the RCEA, and we directed staff to have contract talks with Terregen in the event that they would, their permit would be approved. That was a prudent decision on our part as a board, uh, but it was not a conflict for me, either as a supervisor, which is what I'm, the role I'm playing now. As a member of the Joint Parts Authority, I represent the supervisors, it's a volunteer position, I have absolutely zero financial interest, so there is no conflict. So I wanna thank everyone, county staff. I, I'm, I'm in awe, actually, of this process here. I think that somehow it, it just really hits me in my heart, because it was done with so much respect. I look at the law enforcement officers around the room, I look at the people sitting in the chairs, I look at the people who just volunteered to bring the mic up to the speakers, I look at the people putting out over access Humboldt, I look at everybody in this room, and I look at the media over here, and we're all playing a part in, in this historic day. We're doing it with dignity, and that appeals to me very much. I wanna thank everyone from county staff, from Terregen, who have put a lot of work into this, the Russ family, the unions, Mr. Hoyle, Director Ford in particular. And I wanna thank everyone who has spoken with us. Much of the input we're hearing is based on fear, as has been noted before. On the one hand, fear of the loss of a beautiful view, the loss of a high place of prayer, the loss of animal or plant species, the loss of iconic big trees, the impact on roads and hillsides. On the other side, a fear of the impact of the consequences of climate change, or as one person put it, an unmitigated emergency. But there's another motivating factor for me, and that's vision. So what is the best way forward for our county? I've always been a strong proponent of renewable, clean energy. We all know the impacts of fossil fuel use, and that must stop. My vision for Humboldt County is a strong, diversified, sustainable economy, clean air, beauty to share with all who travel our way, a clean environment for generations to come, a refuge from crowded cities and suburbs. My vision and mission is to represent the county, and more especially, the second district, the people who share my love of place in the Eel Valley. My passion is for teamwork, where we learn to cross whatever boundaries lay between us and work together toward common good solutions, a brighter future. My work includes working on bringing back our water, the natural flow, to the Eel River from the Potter Valley Project. And we've created a regional team to work together toward that end, but it takes time. This project is one of the most divisive issues I have ever dealt with, and that's saying a lot. One speaker referenced, referred to being totally conflicted, and I empathize. I strongly believe and affirm that we must divest ourselves from the use of fossil fuel. I was excited initially to know that we, as a county that prizes the natural beauty of our rural world, could play a part in making a change, that we could at least power our county with cleanly produced energy from a natural, sustainable resource, wind that blows in from our shores. We actually currently have two projects that we are contemplating, this one and the offshore platforms. This seems a good project, but was it a good fit? Are the impacts too great to justify moving forward? Many have asked themselves these questions, my clean energy colleagues, climate action groups, unions, environmental groups, local residents, neighbors of the projects, local tribes, indigenous people. As I vote today, I know that there is no way to avoid disappointing some. But avoiding disappointment is not a good reason to vote, one way or another. My preferred way of doing my job is to listen to all, to work with those who will work with me. I've received numerous letters, emails, phone calls, been approached at the store, at gatherings, in my office. I disagree substantially with some of the internet science that has been bandied about by groups organized against big wind. I agree substantially with much of the technical data that has been presented. I agree with concerns about climate change, clean energy, resilience, independence, but in the final analysis, both a technical and societal level, there are a significant number of issues with this project that have given me pause. I spoke with colleagues from other counties, and I learned that Terregen is a good partner. It's unfortunately no surprise to me that the communities most affected or impacted by this project are arguably the least well-off, and they're also in my district, the Riedel area, the Eel River Valley. On Sunday, I took a walk by the ocean to go to a place of inspiration to me, and standing there, fascinated by big waves crashing in spectacular fashion against the shore, creating incredibly beautiful and powerful displays of natural power, natural energy. Nature is incredibly powerful. Waves, volcanoes, thunderstorms, all of those are awe-inspiring. It occurred to me that we, as a species, have been extremely aggressive in our past in order to meet our needs. We have dammed the rivers, we have drilled to the depths of the earth. We got to where we are today, which is a very tenuous place, by being so aggressive. The question came to me, can we harvest the power of the wind without tearing the earth apart? Is it a matter of place? And I think it is. No solution is perfect. I drive by those ridges on an almost daily basis, looking at the plans. I understand the neighbors don't want it. I understand why the tribal members are upset about- I understand why the tribal members are upset about this place and why it is so disturbing to them. I know that the Russ family is an excellent steward of the land. RCEA is a great organization. The union guys are good, guys and gals are very good about getting good jobs. Early on, when this was before the planning commission, I noted that most of the voices I heard were not from my district, the Eel Valley. I mentioned that to Mary Garnes. Before long, I began to hear a lot from my district. The surrounding Eel Valley, Fortuna, the community most affected. I also want to say that Gordon Johnson, who spoke here earlier, went out and talked with a lot more people than I got to talk with, but I did go downtown Riaidal and talk with people, and I got a similar response. I've spent hours and days and nights boring over this EIR, just when I thought I was getting a handle on it, more and more was added on. I knew the impacts were going to be severe, but what I really wanted to see in this EIR and understand, what those impacts would actually be acceptable in the long run for the greater good of helping fight climate change and provide clean power to our Humboldt County residents. But what I ended up seeing and understanding instead, what these impacts would occur would just be too much to bear for our environment and community. So given my in-depth study of the scientific review of this project, and coupling that with the overwhelming response from the people living in my district, I've concluded that this project is not a good fit for this location, and I cannot support.
Well, you'd go last. Since most of this lies in my district, and I think I've got some friends that I've had for years and years and years, wondering if they're still going to be my friends, looking at, I'm probably the last guy that jumped on climate change. No, seriously, it's happening. I mean, I talked to Kern County, there's nothing against Terregen at all, they could say. I went to Bernie, and then I also talked to the Shasta County Supervisors over there on the Hatchet Mountain Project, which is very, very comparable to this project. Actually, went through Mountain Lake High Prairie, it was a sacred site, and it was And the people in Bernie, after it's up and running, it hasn't been the issue they thought it was going to be. And with that, I can remember, I remember the Shell Project very well, and Cheryl will remember the Shell Project really well, because we got to debate it a few times. And I believe in our last debate, and that's when it was going to cover all of Bear River, I came out opposed to it. That's why, when Terregen reached out, I didn't take the cultural into effect. And you're right, maybe, maybe these should be, and I'm going to go out a little bit farther in this, it's not, I would like a certain amount of the revenue, or else I would like to see if at all possible condition, if this passes, that Terregen work with the tribe, because as Cheryl said yesterday, and I'll pick on Cheryl, and then I can pick on Ted next, but as Cheryl said yesterday, of course you don't know we're up there, we don't tell you, we're very good at that. Now, it's fully understandable why these are sacred sites, and it's fully understandable why they don't want anybody to know, because there's value in those sites for people that go up there and steal the artifacts that are so important to the people whose ancestors they belong to. But with that being said, we need to know where those sites are, because if this site, if this does get voted down, we're not going to see another project come here in quite a while. There's too many unknowns, because nobody knew this, this avenue, this section, and as John Ford said, it wasn't even parlayed out to the extent it is now. I've decided, in science, as in politics and life, people look at information and respectfully differ in their conclusions. We saw a lot of that in the last two days. My scientist is better than your scientist, my brother can beat up your brother. We keep hearing 30 years' life of the project, and I'm not an expert on anything as my colleagues, some of my colleagues are, but I do know most commercial leases run out at 30 years with options to renew. So I don't think in 30 years, if this is still an operating, if it is approved as an operating system, I don't think they're going to say, hey, it's working really good, let's pack up and go home. I think if the agreements can be extended, and I'm sure, I'm not so sure, I haven't seen the, I believe that there are probably options in there. We also heard that the taxes are paid per turbine. So I think what some people are referring to is the Dyson-type turbines, the bladeless Dyson-type turbines, that are, there's a lot of experimental stuff out there, but I can pretty much bet you dollars to donuts that they're going to, if they can get more efficient turbines and take down some to replace those or put up the Dyson-type turbines, I think we'll see that, and I think that option is there. I also, it was also agreed upon yesterday, and it's been reset today, that there will be no expansion of the wind portion of this project. Now, there might be some more battery backup for more efficiency and things like that, that may be there and stuff like that, but I think 47 turbines, and that's it. I mean, I think, and I've heard some of my colleagues talk about a complete moratorium ban, whatever the, is needed till we have a wind turbine policy. Kern County had quite a few turbines up before they did a wind turbine policy, because they realized it would be easier to manage, so maybe we can do it quicker than them, or we may not even need to do one because we're not going to do anymore. I don't know. Don't know if we're doing this one. I, I don't mean to make light of this, but when you did your Bob Dylan "Blowing in the Wind," I will have to do another ex parte for anybody who watched the Super Bowl. That was the Budweisers, they didn't use the puppy this year, that was their Budweiser commercial, was blowing in the wind, going across the prairie with the ocean in the background, and then the wagon with the Clydesdales drove into a field full of wind turbines. And to myself, I'm going, how the hell did Terregen pull that off? But, and I had to laugh. I mean, they play, it was one minute, a $6 million commercial, so, and I, and I forget, you don't, you don't notice, but the other night I was in, I was in Sacramento for a meeting, and then had to run over to San Francisco for meetings, and I went through Fairfield. Fairfield, I realized the commercial significance, Fairfield has two turbines, they're only 400 foot tall, I believe, but they are in downtown Fairfield, 250 yards from the freeway, the interstate, and not much farther than that if at all from a residential area. So I had to turn around and listen to them for a while. I've heard that we're chasing tax dollars, and, and we should wait for the offshore. I remember 16, 18 years ago, being told by a very, not a contingency, to not do anything with the balloon track because there were better things coming. I don't think I'm going to see that in my lifetime, those better things coming. But the wind energy offshore can still complement what we're doing. What I would like to see, pay attention here, you guys. I talked to a lot of counties, and I know you can't commit to anything without a project in front of you, but Bernie, there were quite a few concessions, community concessions made, and I'd like to be forefront that we have some concessions made. I mean, I don't care if we had a community center for Riaidal, Scotia, because they're impacted, because their children are, we just spent $180,000 on a library to get it upgraded for them, and I appreciate that, but I want to, and I'd like to see something forward. Solar's not free, but maybe there can be a solar financing program or something, kind of like the PACE program or something like that, I don't know. But I want a little give back if it does go through. I could name off everybody if I vote for this, I'm going to disappoint, I can name off everybody I may disappoint if I don't vote for it. But there's some people out there I've known quite a while, and on both sides, and you don't take this job to disappoint people, but damn, you get to do it. First thing I heard this morning is, I hope this doesn't ruin your political career. This isn't my career. This is what I'm doing right now. My career, I hopefully, is raising my grandchildren who live in the Eel River Valley also, and giving them somewhere they can be proud of, and an earth they can look at and raise their children, who I will never see, I'm sure. I don't think anybody up here can say this isn't a tough decision. I think it's pretty well-known that I don't sleep at night anyway. Christ, I lost sleep. And I don't have that much to lose. I was at the office last night till 9:30 going over stuff, and there this morning about 5:30 because I felt like I'd been working out, I'd tossed and turned so much. But this is tough. I want to, somewhere in here, and I, I don't know why it's something like this that has to knock us upside the head, that we look at AB 52, and I appreciate the clarification we got from Supervisor Wilson on his discussion with the author or the co-author. We need to work with the tribal liaisons to make sure these sites, and as Supervisor Madron repeated, these sites would qualify, but I don't know if they qualify automatically. I think we have, I think there is paperwork that has to be filled out, there has to be steps, and I think we can assist the tribes so we don't have these issues again. Ted, I don't know if most of those young people in the back of the room were from out there, but I think that might have been one of the most respectful bunch of young people I've ever seen, and that gives you what kind of people, and the people that are there, I know they're not all there, which means, thank you, they went to school today, but they were so respectful. There were older people clapping when I asked not to, they didn't. That was respectful, and for that, I applaud you, because those are, that is our future. And I think you, I think, respect for the land, respect for your people, yeah, I'll go with you on that one. Respect for your elders, which I am, not a tribal elder, I'm just an old man, I thought was great. So, you young people, nice job. But I will commit, Ted, you and I have talked about when they do the cleanup at Ocean Ranch, extending that, and maybe we can do some work down on your, on your lower end, and after that devastating fire, that would probably help. So I will commit to working with you as hard as you need me to on that, however this vote goes, just contact me. But I do, I do appreciate your words. Nice crafts fair last weekend, 1,800 people or 1,750 people, nice job. With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Few comments. One is, I resent this federal administration for putting us in a timeframe with this tax credit bullshit. Sorry. I apologize for the radio. This is a result of a presidential election in 2016, and we are suffering, we have trauma over that. So these elections have consequences, and this wouldn't even be a question in terms of the renewal of these tax credits if we had a different administration running the show. Tax credits might even be better. And, and, and so, and for people who don't like these tax credits, I will say, I mean, this is, if you want fundamental change in our energy systems, we got to pay for it one way or another. This, this is, this is the mechanism we set up to do that. I want to respond a little bit, and I give Supervisor Madron a hard time about this a lot, and the perspective of, you know, micro hydro, a few extra electric buses, the scale of this project relative to all of those things doesn't even compare. I mean, it's orders of magnitude, orders of magnitude bigger. We, we can't even begin to replace that type of GHG with that. I mean, solar on a few houses in the hills, not going to do it, right? I want to talk a little bit about fragmentation that was discussed here a little bit in this project and its fragmentation. This board, not, not with Supervisor Madron on the board, and not with my necessarily consent, but I will tell you, a lot of people in this audience supported a general plan that principally permitted residential development to dwellings on every ag and timber parcel in this county. And as a land use perspective, you know, that's 30,000 building sites in the county, right? For potent, so when we talk about the loss of the potential capacity for our forest and our prairies, for greenhouse gases, we don't analyze that for every other development, except for this one development, we analyzed it. Maybe we should, I think maybe we should be thinking about every other development in the same way we analyze this one, the criticism of this development, in terms of its, in terms of its impact on GHG, we don't even come close to. As a matter of fact, we approved the general plan with overriding considerations because we couldn't account for the GHG production it would make because of the sprawl it would produce. Yeah. How many people were in the room to protest that? One, two, maybe, that had comment related to that? You know, it's, the, I just, that part is just really hard for me. I just have to say, like, when we, we talk about all the things we think we're going to do in our private lives to adjust for these things, we're not even coming close to. And, and, and I hear someone say, well, I, I lived off the grid for a while. Well, great, that's, you lived off the grid, but we have 140,000 people in this county alone. thousand people in this county alone, and if we all lived off the grid, the sprawl and the inefficiencies in energy that that would actually create, I think we're not really accounting for. And when we're talking about energy systems on our homes, it doesn't account for the energy systems that run our sewers and our water systems and our hospitals and every other in institution that we have. We're not accounting for all those things. So, I just, you know, this is just, that is a very, we have a big accounting for. And part of the reason for all of that is because we have internalized the construct of cheap fossil fuels that has created our society. And, and every time we talk about doing something like, well, let's make gas ten dollars a gallon, well, the impact on poor people is, that's, that's where it's, who's gonna get hit by that? So, we always complain about the price of gas, you know? Just complain about it all the time, right? And yet, we hardly ever complain about, you know, openly about the, you know, what's coming out our tailpipes. I just think that's, um, really, we got a long ways to go on this. That being said, I'm still pretty, and I, and I, and I, I'm also a little bit disappointed when we're getting down to talking about condors at this last minute and we don't just ask the question, how do turbines turn off when the condors get near? I assume there's an answer for that, but we're way past that. Should've asked that question a while ago. On the issue of taxes and the issue of, um, what we derive, can, Amy, can you give us one more time the total, uh, sales tax that would be derived and the, and the, and the total in terms of the long-term to our general fund and to the schools?
Sorry, as I try to talk into the microphone. So, in the first year, we have an estimated two hundred and seventy-eight thousand in property tax. In sales tax, we have about one point four million. So, that would be one point seven million in the first year. Over the life of the project, at thirty years, we have seven point four million in property tax to the general fund and two point three million in sales tax to the general fund for a total of nine point eight million.
Okay. I mean, you, you were talking, here's the deal, I really, I, I'm, I have a really hard time with this project on Bear River Ridge, um, because that was a threshold that was thrown down by the tribe early on. And when I say early, I mean in the comment period of it. So, I just have a very tough time with, with, uh, this project, um, and being on Bear River Ridge. And I understand there's still probably some concerns by a lot of people with regards to Monument Ridge. I understand that, and I get that. Do we have the capacity to take that money and split it between the two, what I would say, most affected communities, which would be Rio de la and the tribe? Just straight up?
I, if we're gonna go that route, Scotia's a half mile closer.
I don't know how you do that because Scotia is a non-incorporated.
Well, we understand, but...
And are they, is it still all owned by a, by a single entity or not?
No, I think they have sold about a hundred and thirty houses, close, something like that. Frank hasn't asked me to walk a map through lately, so I think he's still got houses for sale.
But then there's also the, the question of to whether or not, you know, again, I person, just can't get, get past Bear River Ridge. And that is, I don't know how many units that is on this, on this project, and maybe I can be told that. I mean, I...
What's that? I believe it's twenty, twenty-three. No, on Bear River.
Twenty even?
Twenty even.
It's twenty even.
Yeah. I mean, that's, 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 that's a stalling point for me. I'm just being real clear about that. I think that's a threshold. I think, you know, we send a message, it's not just, um, you know, how are we gonna deal with our tribal communities in the future? Uh, this is one of those, this is one of those breaking points for that. Um, I, I think we're, you know, we deal with the Urocs and the Hoopas and everybody else, and they're looking at this too. And they're, they, this is, this is of interest, and they are community members. So, I really, I am really leaning towards alternative five in this, in this, yeah, and I'm, and I'm willing to go there as a matter of compromise in this, in this, um, project. And I do know that, um, I do know that, uh, there has been curtailment in terms of the numbers of, of units on there as part of, as part of the design, because they didn't wanna curtail use of those, um, of those units due to, um, uh, the potential for, um, impacts related to Marble Marillet. But I'm just wondering if, if the removal of twenty of these, of these units can make up for some of that potential for impact, uh, in there? And, uh, I mean, this is, this, it's really pretty important to me. Otherwise, we have a, there's a fundamental issue I have with that. So, we can take a break if the, if the applicant wants to grind some numbers, look at some stuff. We can even talk about return of some of our derived tax value to make up for that, if that's needed. I'm willing to talk about that too. But there's gotta be, that's, that's where it's gonna be for me. So, I am, like I said, I'm willing to, if people wanna take a break and talk about it for a minute and see what we can do, I'm willing to do that.
Director Ford?
Thank you, Judge Bone. We, we can certainly take a look at that, we can talk to the applicant, but off the top of my head, based upon some of the things I do know, is that there were turbines removed from Monument Ridge, yes, to address Marble Marillet. Also, I think to move away from the, uh, Zanzi property. And so, there, there are trade-offs, and don't forget, from a tax revenue standpoint, if turbines are removed, those turbines then don't generate tax revenue. So, so that significantly changes all of those calculations.
And I assume we can estimate that just based on a proportional perspective?
We can try.
Go.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. This is, uh, a part of, uh, the dialogue that we had with RCEA. We, uh, discussed reduce, uh, removing all turbines from Bear River Ridge. And at that point, we determined that that is not a feasible project. As a part of the documents associated, the analysis is included, uh, on alternative five, uh, within, uh, the administrative draft memorandum. And in that document, it shows that only twenty-seven turbines, uh, yields an infeasible project. To give you an idea of, of the type of returns, um, in mid PPA price of our proposed project, it's roughly six and a half percent. These are after-tax IRRs. This is calculated by a third party, I believe, third party. The third party calculated for no turbines on Bear Ridge, just twenty-seven turbines, so removing those twenty turbines, that the mid PPA price is, uh, return is four point five percent. No one will invest in this project at four and a half percent. And that is why we deemed it, well, it, it has been deemed, uh, to be an infeasible alternative. And, uh, and I understand the extreme sensitivity of this, but from a commercial perspective, removing the turbines from Bear River Ridge, this project will not be built. And, and that is from, that is my perspective, and I think we've been pretty consistent throughout. So, with respect, sir.
Appreciate that. Um, I don't know where else to go with that, um, unless, um, I have a big problem with this right now. And again, I'm going back to that, uh, kid, I'll call him a kid, young man who was here four months, who, you know, I feel, this is, um, what's the word I'm saying here? This is embarrassing, uh, and, and, uh, that we are in this place where we feel like I'm having this conversation and negotiation where, uh, that negotiation should have happened a long time ago with the tribe. And, um, in terms of this, and I, I'm really, this is, for lack of a better word, you know, we're getting into landscape scale reparations, really. That's what we're talking about. And, um, it should, we should have really been approaching it from that perspective at this scale. I mean, it's one thing when we're talking about a house here or something there, but we're talking landscape, uh, landscape, excuse me, landscape scale, um, changes on fundamentally culturally important landscapes. And, and from my perspective, that is, I am, this is, this is a really heavy and horrible place to be, to be right at this moment. Just saying, this is not cool. We, again, how much is that, did you guys do any calculations in terms of, say, dividing that, that value into three parts? And I wanna, which was the, the, those tax values and I, and, and, and are there no, uh, uh, turbines that can be removed from this project? And is there not some way that we can begin negotiations? Cause I'm, I wanna get someplace, but I'm not getting there, and this is really, and uh, this is, this is terrible. I'll just tell you, this is, this is, the scale of, of, of the potential value versus the impacts are pretty much on the balance. I mean, they're on the balance on this board, for sure, which kinda pushes me into the zone of where we're not gonna do this, cause it's like getting to that space. So, like, I gotta get something where we, where it's of value. And again, this is somewhat patronizing that we're having this conversation without the impacted peoples. I apologize about that. I mean, this is terrible. I'm crying, seriously. Help me out, people.
Can I be recognized?
Please.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson through the chair. The sensitivity of this issue, um, I have felt as well. Um, there are a couple things that I think there would, that could be for your considerate, for your board's consideration. And there are some things that I've seen from other counties, is that when there are local impacts and there are taxes going to population centers, uh, away from those that are impacted, and here, I, I think that the, I believe that the board has outlined certain affected people. That first, at least as I've understood it in other jurisdictions, there is the ability to redirect a, a portion of the county's tax revenue to the affected people. And typically, that is a board vote on that. And I believe that that is in your discretion on how you wanna allocate potential property tax and sales tax revenues, to the extent that they come to you, uh, can be directed. Uh, I would first of all suggest, um, respectfully, uh, for your board to consider that in this instance, to address, um, obviously, not only Rio de la, uh, but also, uh, some of the other, you know, tribal considerations that we've been discussing. I think along with that, and I'm just, you know, train of thought thinking, there are other impacts, and so, we are willing to put aside and fund an endowment, uh, as it is, as it relates, and we call it, we'll call it a community endowment, we're willing to fund that, prior to the start of operation, for the board to distribute at its sole discretion. And when you're talking, I think, uh, Chairman Bone, you, you had mentioned you wanna see I think a combination of the redirection of a portion of, of the tax revenue and accompanied with, um, a million dollar community endowment to be dispersed as you see fit. It can go to whatever you wish it to be, but that is something that the applicant is willing to consider. Uh, thank you.
And I appreciate that. And, and I don't know if I'm catching up for our lost time because I know that we did, I, I know staff did a great job of reaching out. And I, I do know that sacred sites aren't for sale. But knowing, and I'm looking at Cheryl and Ted because there's no one else here to look at for this answer. I'm sure there are other sites that you feel are sacred sites that we need to get registered. Um, am I... Can, can I, I can do anything, I'm the chair, sure, step up here, Cheryl. And I, and Cheryl, as I mentioned earlier, if I would've known seven years ago, as much as Bear River was all of this, it was, we, it didn't come up much seven years ago, as, as it's been documented, but I, I, that does not take away from the validity, it does not take away from the sacredness and how you feel about it. So, I, I wanna, I wanna clarify that. But what I'm saying is, there's, is there a way, it's not a mitigation, but is there a way, since none of these, I've, I've heard that there's historic registrations, there's AB fifty-two monies for registering and sites like that? Are there other sites that you would like to be assisted in, in acquiring or registering?
Just a second. Mr. Chairman, may I speak? Thank you.
I figured, I figured he'd let you up here.
I just marched up here. Hot, wet, rain, good afternoon, everyone. And thank you for the deliberation. I, I just got here, I was doing family business this morning, I got here just to hear my, and thank you all for your comments. The Terrigen, um, Chairman Bone, I said it right? There's not enough money to do that, because we can't, you would not sell your mother. We cannot sell our earth. And I don't mean to be disrespectful. You don't know where indigenous peoples come from? We come from here. We come from the earth. I don't mean any disrespect to, um, the Russ family. We come from the earth. And I know the Russ family probably has similar feelings because they work so good and so well. they work so good and so well with their property. With the Union people, I'm a Union member, but, but I've got it.
I wanted the answer to the, the one, because I don't want anybody to feel slighted on their time, so, thank you.
No, I want to answer your question, but I had to address all those other people.
Understood.
I, Mike has said it. We needed to be here, we needed to have, look at all you and all your people behind you, and look at the we outside, there is nothing there. We have always been saying, this has been my thing, you want a project here, our United States of America, bring us in before you break ground. So what I'm saying, and to answer your question, sir, is that we want to be a part of the project, you want to know where our sacred sites are, and you're going to say, I have another site in mind, call us. We're not putting them on the register so people can go out there with their shovels, with the pick sacks and all that. So the answer is that we want to be here, doing this with you, not against you, but with you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
And so that, that's my answer, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Fennel?
So, I could have predicted that was what Cheryl would say. I want to say that this is just one project, and I, I want to look Nathan and, and Mr. Hoyle in the eye. I, I, I think that if only it was on a different location, I would be all over this, because I really do believe in what you do. I think that it's a, clean energy is a good way. To the Union, I talked with you early on, and you were telling me no, and then you came along and you made an agreement, and you said yes. So I, I want to call all of that out, I want to tell the people who own the property that this is, this decision is being made, because I believe it's, we have to, we have to recognize the impact that this has, whether we want a job, or whether we want clean energy, or whatever else we want, we have to recognize the impact. And, and I look at, I asked Mr. Hoyle about the size of one of the blades, and they're like 200 feet, the towers are 600 feet, our redwood trees are like at the most 350 feet, so they dwarf our natural environment, of which we are so proud. And Director Ford said earlier, there is really no compromise in a situation like this, because the towers are the towers, you can't make them smaller, or they won't give you, then you have more of them. So it just, it's not, it's not a workable solution. I don't think, with all due respect, that, you know, doing a portion of the tax revenue is, is really the answer. If we're talking about the tax coming into the county as being a plus, and then we're kind of just distributing it out, I'm not, I just don't, I don't get that as, as a particular thing. I, I, the endowment is a good offer, but again, I, I do want to say that I'm hopeful that we have plenty of other clean energy projects. And there is, there was at one point, when I saw a lot of people, not from the Eel Valley, not from our area, people who would really complain if it was in their backyard. I was starting to think, as the pushback came, if this goes away, are we ever going to say yes to anything in Humboldt County? And I believe we will, and I believe we can. It just has to be the right project. And we, we are making a name for ourselves at the state level and beyond. I heard a talk show with Yana Valakovic this morning, talking about Humboldt County being the first place where we had a U.C. cooperative extension. The question was, why did they pick Humboldt County? This is like 100 years ago or more. And it was because Humboldt County was innovative, even then. So I don't think that this is the end of our future. It's one project, and we just have to look very carefully at its location and the impact of, of putting it where it is. I, I went up there, I was excited, I got to tell you, because I actually think the ingenuity of the modern windmills is, is extraordinary, and, and actually, you know, a manifestation of our, of our creativity. But again, places is, is really the question. I was excited about it, and I, I know that my colleagues on the RCEA were very excited about it, and I will tell you this, when we talked about it at the RCEA, and this was coming up with the Planning Commission, we had a discussion as to whether or not the RCEA would go forward and make comments on this, and it was my recommendation that we wouldn't, that we could offer our executive director as a technical advisor, but we shouldn't take a stand. So I, I want you to know that you may have heard from some members of RCEA on this, but it was not a voted, and if it was, it was at a meeting that I wasn't at. So again, we're all looking for clean energy, good decisions, and I, I'm not, even though this is a very important decision that we're making today, it's not the only time we'll be deciding on a big project like this.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I see the way this is, direction this is going, but, you know, I did want to just kind of point out that, a young woman yesterday said, no way to make up the past, but we can affect the future. Two days ago, I think Cheryl, or in the Time Standard, was quoting as saying, and as you somewhat may know, all land is sacred. So my, my question is eventually, will, you know, I, I, I think there should be a way to register, but it doesn't sound like it's one ed, you know, we, I think we've got to find a way where their, their land is felt as it's being protected, but also be able to hopefully bring, you know, projects in the future. And so there's got to be something worked out, because if this is what, you know, we could happen, if all land is sacred, it's, it's just kind of a conundrum. And I think whatever happens with this vote, I think that needs to be dealt with, because I think it's, they're very confusing, and if I was a businesswoman to come here, I'd, I'd think, you know, I'd be a little concerned. And if I was the tribe, I would be concerned also, because you don't know who might be planning something. I just think it would make sense. You know, if all land is sacred, a person who's in this audience, who I, I have always thought of as kind of, well, very much environmentalist, hadn't agreed on a lot through the years. You know, and he said, if we don't as a county act now, there won't be any sacred land left. So I'm sticking with my vote to support it.
Is that a motion? Make a motion. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've talked it through pretty extensively. I appreciate the audience's incredible listening skills. Thank you very much. I would move that we approve and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign the attached indemnification agreement, regardless of whether the project is approved or denied, and this motion is made to protect the taxpayers of Humboldt County.
I'll second that.
We moved and seconded all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none.
Well, I'm going to see if this will fly and see how it goes, but I need to bring up the thing, but I have it up. I mean, I, I'm still, if we, if. Director Ford, if, if, if a motion is made to approve option alternative five, and I, I understand that the applicant is saying that's a no-go, what is the, what's the outcome of that? And besides the, the applicant saying that there's no-go, but it's still, it's still a permit to proceed with a project, it just is as described in, in alternative five, correct? And those do come with entitlements, is that not true?
That is true. One of the things that I would just caution you about is that this current set of resolutions, and this was not done to be difficult, but they are really tailored for approval of the project, including financial feasibility or infeasibility of other options. And so there are things that would need to be cleaned up.
So in making that motion, then the findings of, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily make the findings that it's feasible per se, I mean, are we, do we have the capability to make a motion and pass something that's infeasible, and, and what is the ramifications of that?
Do that every day. You know, at, you are granting an entitlement. The thing that I would want the opportunity to do is make sure that the documentation for the entitlement is capturing the findings of the board. And, and at this point, you would be making a, a motion and approving a direction for a project that we have documented is not feasible.
This is a terrible day. There's nothing about this as good at all.
I, I would offer, if, if that's just where you want to go, I mean, you can make that decision. The thing that I would ask, perhaps as part of your motion that you do, just to give the ability to do, make a motion, is to direct staff to make the necessary changes to the resolution. Or, since I'm, I think I'm understanding how the applicant's going to interpret the action anyway, that you make a motion of intent to do this, and then allow us to bring back the final documents on January 7th for final action.
That would be even worse.
Supervisor Bass?
Supervisor Wilson, it is a horrible day. Do you want me to take over and get, try to move this on?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to clarify something, because you both keep talking about a horrible day. And, I mean, over the last two days, we've seen the respect of a lot of young folk, we've had a pretty much respectful audience. I think all of us are going to be able to walk home to our families tonight. Is the decision going to be favorable? It's by far, we all live in Humboldt County. If you don't wake up every day in Humboldt County, and thank God that you just woke up in Humboldt County, at my age, whenever I wake up, I thank God wherever, but I really like Humboldt County. So I don't think it's a terrible day, it's a tough day, but it's, I can't call this a terrible day anytime I, I'm around here, so.
I want to just say here, one of the things that is influencing my decision to do this, or to potentially deny this, because I haven't really got so close, is, is that I am not sure what discontent this, it's not just lawsuits, and, and the community disarray that would continue for, I don't know how long, I really don't. And some people have, I'm just going to put this out there and be really blunt, some people will call that bullying, from a certain perspective, and from, from where I'm standing, is it, and I want to be really clear with people, is it, how do I say this? We're at a, yeah, it's a conundrum. I mean, Cheryl, I love you, you know this, right? This is, Cheryl, one of my, is a very good friend, and, and, and that's, that's not really actually where I'm at, it's just, you know, we're connected on, from a long-term relationship related to a lot of things, and I don't want people to think that, that, that hasn't a large influence on my decision. What has an influence on my decision is the journey that we took together in, in terms of Tullawatt and Indian Island, and the journey that we took with the fam, with that, that family. So that, that's, that's part of this deal. And I want to acknowledge that the sacredness of that site, again, if we had just known about this earlier, I don't know what, what we would change. You know, I'm just, this is, I'm having such a difficult time, I apologize, I'm torturing hundreds of people with this, and probably, who knows how many hundreds more are watching and listening, so I apologize for that too. But I'm just, I really can't get there, I'm just, this is a really, I want to, I really do, I want to approve this project, and not because of, I want to, really, I do. If this didn't have, you know, sort of long-term, there's, I, I want to acknowledge a lot of what the Humboldt State students came and talked about, I apologize for getting back into this. They talked about social justice in this, and, and those sorts of things, and those are real things, they're social things, right? And they are real to the extent that it will have impact, and that has health, health impacts, but, and those are long-term, and they're, they're super real. The climate also has health impacts, too. This is really hard. I don't know what to do, I'm still.
Supervisor Bass?
All right, this may not fly, I'll just get in on for conversation, because Supervisor Wilson's not doing this, and so I think I'm going to have to try. And I remove that we adopt the resolution that's attached, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt to take the following actions. Certifying that the environmental impact report for the Humboldt Wind Project has been prepared in compliance with SEQA, and setting forth findings of fact and evidence to support this action. Do I have to say them all, or you guys get the idea? I can go through them all. Certifying the final EIR that was presented, number, it's letters. I can, I, there's bazillions here, would you like them?
No, sorry.
I was just going to say staff recommendation, but that, that's not fair.
Say staff, say staff recommendation to adopt the resolution, certifying the EIR has been prepared in compliance with SEQA, certifying the final EIR was presented to the Board, and the Board of Supervisors considered the information contained in the FER, certifying the FER reflects the county's independent judgment.
I said that, actually, I think, what I wanted to say is, the reason I didn't say staff recommendation, just in its entirety, Supervisor Madron and I have been working on the rules, and we feel the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Additionally, adopt resolution attached, the second one, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt to take the following actions. Finding the project is consistent with the Humboldt County general plan, and the findings required for approval of the special permit and conditional use permit can be made. In granting the applicant's appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of the special permit and conditional use permit. And approving the conditional use permit and special permit subject to the conditions of approval listed on attachment three, and direct planning staff to prepare and file a notice of determination with the county clerk and office of planning and research within five working days of project approval in its entirety. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you. I'm interpreting the motion did include the added condition to address , uh, hydrology in, in the conditions of approval, and also mitigation measure 18F, which is added to the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
I think you can throw pixie dust and everything else in there. Bonuses for staff and everything. It's been moved and seconded. I'm sorry. May I, I need, can do a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bone. I will now take a roll call vote in numerical order, beginning with District Two Supervisor Fennel.
No.
District Three Supervisor Wilson? District Four Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
District Five Supervisor Madron?
No.
District One Supervisor Bone?
I gotta go to the bathroom.
No.
Yes.
I think I want to throw...
Motion fails.
Make a motion.
Motion, motion fails. Three, two.
That's it?
Project is denied. No? Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Hang on, hang on. We get one more shot at it. I mean, not one more. Project is going to be denied. That's, just hang on a second. Excuse me.
Yep. So you need to have a motion that passes.
Okay.
All you did there was reject that motion.
I understand. I understand.
I make a motion to deny the project.
Second?
For all of the reasons that have been stated in these hearings about inadequate EIRs and the failure to consult adequately with the Weot tribe and to meet the concerns of that, those people. Yes, those people. Is that adequate, Mr. Director?
If you... It is when we get a second.
Yeah, there was a second.
Was there?
So I assume part of that motion is that you're directing staff to prepare the resolution to incorporate all those factors that you just itemized into that motion, into the resolution of denial.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Um, I have to say that I seconded it when the motion was to deny. I did not second the additional verbiage. Sorry, just straight across the board, denied. Because I didn't hear all of it. I don't know what it was.
Do you want to explain the additional verbiage to the secondor?
So, one of the things that we need to be able to do is articulate the action of the board in the resolution. There's got to be reasons for the denial. And so while you and Supervisor Madron have each given us...
Numerous.
Numerous things. If, if the motion maker would just allow us to have the opportunity to take the things that you previously stated in the hearing, and the things that Supervisor Fennel has mentioned in the hearing as the rationale for denial, then we can incorporate a res, or draft a resolution with those, um, issues being articulated.
That is acceptable.
Thank you, Chair Bone. We will take the roll call vote again in numerical order, beginning with District Two Supervisor Fennel.
Yes.
District Three Supervisor Wilson?
Already down this path, I guess. Yes.
District Four Supervisor Bass?
Think the writing's on the wall, that'd be a yes.
District Five Supervisor, Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And District One Supervisor Bone? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody being here. Now you can whoop.